All right. Good morning. Welcome to the March 21st, 2023 meeting of the Trinity County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance Supervisor Lute Wiler will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, closed session, report out. And I did report out on the March 7th meeting when we had our March 17th special meeting, but I'm going to repeat that. We only had four people on Zoom and just seems like it's better to give a little bit more clarity. So from March 7th, item 6.1, Government Code Section 54954.5F, conference with labor negotiators. Trinity County's designated representatives are Margaret Long and Elizabeth Hamilton. No reportable action was taken. Item 6.2, Government Code Section 54954.5C, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, number of cases seven. Sabai at Al versus Trinity County at Al. And I'm not going to read all of the case numbers. If you want that clarity, you can go back and look at the media to expedite a bit since it is on the record. A direction given to staff. Bauer at Al versus Trinity County at Al, no reportable action was taken. Mines versus Trinity County at Al, no reportable action was taken. Mines versus Trinity County and Kemp Hunter, no reportable action was taken. Trinity Alps Farms Incorporated at Al versus Trinity County at Al, no reportable action was taken. Carlson at Al versus County of Trinity at Al, direction given to staff. American Cannabis Partners LLC versus Keith Groves at Al, no reportable action was taken. Item 6.3, Government Code Section 54954.5C, conference with legal counsel. Initiation of litigation, number of cases eight, direction was given to staff. Item 6.4, Government Code Section 54954.5E, public employee evaluation county council. There was a language correction from evaluation held to when the minutes are adopted to be included as the board met to discuss the county council evaluation process. No formal reportable action was taken. During our March 17th special meeting, there was also a closed session. That was item 2.1, Government Code Section 54954.5E, public employee evaluation county council. The board met to further discuss the county council evaluation process. No reportable action was taken. Right, so presentations this morning. Item 1.1, receive a presentation from UC Cooperative Extension Community Economic Development Advisor Alec Domka. And it looks like we have Larry Ferrero to present or introduce. Okay, great. You'll just need a microphone to do so.
Remote work. Does it look like we're? Oh, yeah. So if you want to move that to slideshow.
It's it's just taking a second. It's being slowed today.
Look at this. It works. Amazing. So, well, good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Larry Ferrero. I'm the livestock farm advisor and county director for Shasta and Trinity County. So I have the administrative responsibility for university, for A and R programs in in Trinity County. We've got a couple of slides just just by way of review in terms of who we are. So cooperative extension is a three-way partnership between University of California, USDA, and the counties, or in this case, the county of Trinity specifically. And the framers of cooperative extension 100 plus years ago, I thought were very wise to assure that that the county was part of the financial support for these programs in that it assures our programs are relevant locally. So Trinity County was established in 1946. And it was interesting, the the original MOU, there's a copy of it on the right side of the of the slide panel. I updated it in 2000 and very, very little had changed except for the who will hold who harmless for what. But the the general relationship is UC provides programmatic staff. County provides support. So we are a department, you know, in the county and receive general fund for programs we deliver locally. So support staff that that is Trinity County, Trinity County employee is Grace Hung, and we are very, very grateful to have her. I I'll just take a second and and really thank Trinity County personnel for the perseverance in continuing to try to push this out to find someone that would that would hold this position during a time when recruitments were very difficult. And we were very, very fortunate to hire to hire Grace. She supports 4H program, master gardener program, as well as some others locally. And if you haven't met her, she's just a delightful person to be around. So program staff that serve Trinity County, with the exception of Alec, all from Reading is Nate Katen, our 4H youth development advisor. Erin Paradis, she operates or is responsible for day-to-day day-to-day management of the 4H youth development program in Trinity County. And I I think it's it's kind of kind of fun. She's done a really nice job, and we have seen continued growth in our enrollment in this county. I introduce myself, Janessa Hartman. I'm really pleased we were able to hire her, community nutrition and health advisor. Again, headquartered in Reading, but she she's been with us since November and has made several several trips to Trinity County already and is looking at at maybe piloting master food preserver program. So I'm I'm pretty excited about that. Alec is our community economic development advisor, Humboldt, Del Norte and Trinity. And I misspelled Trinity. And as a native, maybe you'll let that's you'll let you'll let my error slide. And then I I'm I'm I was really sad. Our first advisor, Rick Satomi, left about a year ago to he transferred to Yuba Sutter County. I did get permission to refill that position. It is in recruitment now. And that that individual will serve Shasta Trinity as well. Just a quick, a quick overview of our CalFresh program. We provide, we provide nutrition education in the classrooms. Shanice Sellers and Chanel Vincelli run that program for Shasta Trinity in Tahima. We have not had a nutrition educator in Trinity County for close to a year. And we have recruited and had failed searches, recruited and had failed searches. I am really pleased to report in Trinity for one of the positions we are in an off, we we have actually Shanice sent me a note last night. Candidate accepted the offer and will begin April 10th. So we will have someone in Trinity County in that role, and then we're recruiting for another position as well. So that being said, I'm going to, I'm going to give the the slight advance to Alec. I'm really pleased he he I was on the selection committee. It was an incredibly competitive search, and he emerged as our top candidate, and we were really pleased he accepted the position. So Alec.
Nice. Alec, thank you for being here today. And just by way of a little bit of further introduction before he begins, Supervisor Lute Wiler and I jumped on a Zoom meeting with Alec a few weeks ago, realizing the position had been filled and both of us kind of scratching our heads as to what does this offer Trinity County? We we don't even know. And so we were so impressed and the scope of services is so vast and it's not open to just, you know, governance. So we were pleased that he accepted our invitation to come in and share with everyone what what's available. So Alec, thank you for being here.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, board, and thank you for that introduction, Larry. So what I have for you today is a brief introduction to myself, an introduction to the position, an introduction to the tools I use, a brief rundown of some of the projects I've done, how I can plug into Trinity County, and then if we have times, quick questions and answers. So a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Raleigh, North Carolina. I got my undergrad degrees and my masters from North Carolina State in Raleigh. I took a brief hiatus in between school and work to be a farm hand on a couple dairy farms in Austria. So I love the practical side of agricultural economics too, of getting out on the farm. This is my sixth, sixth month with University of California Cooperative Extension and my six months in California. I moved right from North Carolina here. So excited to be here. My hobby is pretty much anything outside, hiking, rock climbing, backcountry skiing, and I'm a search and rescue team member for Del Norte, which is where I'm stationed full-time is Crescent City. So my position. Yeah. So my position, community economic development advisor. So we're guided by our needs assessment and all the work that we do. So I'm in the needs assessment phase right now. So that's mainly what I'm here to do is try to figure out what you guys think the needs of the county are. So once we identify these needs, how do we address them? So we mostly do applied research and educational extension. So our research is guided by the community needs and then our extension is to community members. So in this position, our prime directives are to aid in new models, not just to apply the the standard traditional economic development models, but to try to come up with more rural-based economic development solutions. Secondly, we try to fill the capacity gap by providing technical assistance, things like economic impact analysis, technical writing. That's somewhere where we can really help in the small rural counties. And then we want to better link NGOs and local governments and tribal governments. So who's my clientele? Who do I do this for? Local governments like yourself, tribal governments, and then NGOs that work in the small business development or community or economic development space. My big question, what I'm mainly in this position to address is what economically successful communities look like? And then how do we get there in our specific communities here? So community economic development, it's a little different than just traditional economic development. So there's our big working definition there. Really what it's about is community direction of its own economic development so that it can guide it in the direction it wants. And then it's also about leveraging the assets that are already in the community. So the community economic development has to go beyond financial capital. We have to be able to to look at the other capitals we have, like in Trinity, I mean, a ton of natural capital, natural beauty, a real way to spur economic development like that, human capital, human skills. And this, this helps us better understand the economy and the health of the community and also improve it because you can get you know, you can get gains in financial capital just from, you know, increasing training, things like increasing human capital that you wouldn't always think about as economics. Another important point about what we do in community economic development is it's not one project or a string of projects. It's about linking those projects together in a cohesive plan. You can spend a lot of time and money just going after every project that you think is good, but you can be a lot more conscientious, making sure there's a real plan. So some of those tools that we use to do this, the community capitals framework is a really interesting one, and I'll go over that in the next slide just very briefly. And we really want to fill in the traditional economic development shortfalls. So where that might be, you know, really just focused on GDP or jobs created. We want to try to take a a more holistic view to see community economic development health. So some of the tools I use, this is a main one. It kind of helps understand what I can help you guys do in Trinity County. So this is a great Venn diagram of the community capitals framework. This is how we assess what the assets that a community has, so we can try to leverage those to get more economic development. As you can see, the kind of more traditional economic development ones, financial built capital are a part of it, but they're just a part. All these other ones are are key in having a successful community. And I also like not just how they all overlap to form a successful community in this diagram, but you can see they all interact with each other separately. So something that we found in a lot of our research is there tends to be spirals in all of these capitals in communities. So, you know, a small increase in financial will spur a bigger increase in built. And then that balloons to, you know, increase political capital with access to political representatives, increase human capital with training from maybe a school you built, things like that. So now we can see kind of how I apply these on a day-to-day. Numerically, most of what I do is connecting people to resources and knowledge. The University of California is really that bridge between university know-how and the community. So a lot of times I'm doing things for groups like the Redwood Park Conservancy, just connecting them to you know, taking a call that they want to redesign their garden to all natives. And then I'm not a plant guy, so I just, you know, connect them to our horticulture expert right down in Humboldt. A lot of it's about really just kind of making those connections numerically. That's mostly what I do, as I said. Finding art at home, that picture on the right, Crescent City was donated thousands of pieces of very strange and very cool art. So I was able to connect the two people in blue who are arts philanthropists in Crescent City to the city to find a place to house it because the city just couldn't house it. It's there's so much. So work in the policy support space. This is something that I can do for you guys or for you, the citizens of Trinity County. I was able to work with Larry and some of our other livestock experts to make an equation to kind of apportion some state drought relief to different dairymen based on their increases in food costs. So that's something I do and I can absolutely help Trinity with. When the rural counties came to Del Norte, I was a good tour guide, a great cheerleader for the region. I really love the region. So research and educational extension, that's the bread and butter of what we do at Corporate Extension. So some examples of what I've done in that, small town arts and economic development. Crescent City has been kind of pushing to do some placemaking, some kind of things to set it apart and really make it interesting for people to stay. So I've prepared some economic research on, you know, arts and small towns and how success stories have really been able to make themselves successful. Because they're not successful for no reason. They they had a strategy. So, you know, that's what I do. I go and dig in and figure out what their success strategy is and how we can apply it. All these pictures on the right are me presenting and participating in a panel for the Partnership for the Performing Arts. They are are building a large theater at the high school for public use, events, student performances, all that. So I you know, they came to me with a community need. I addressed it with an economic impact analysis, and I was able to pull in some university partners, people from UC Davis, and get them out into Crescent City, which is great. And then that linked up perfectly with the extension side. I went out and, as you can see, did this presentation to PPA members and supporters and local government officials. So how can I plug this into Trinity? So as I said, I'm still really focused on my needs assessment right now. So I am, you know, starting to get going on projects, but I want to make sure I'm not just diving in blindly. You know, I really want to hear from you guys where I'm most needed and then really focus my efforts on that. But so far, what I've seen, these are two kind of similar things that I would be delivering. So with these two projects, I would kind of conduct some kind of ongoing economic analysis for them. I've heard that you guys are, you know, looking at trying to get the Bowerman Barn up to someplace for a little better tourist attraction. So something I could do would be an ongoing economic impact analysis. So figuring out how much money it's bringing into the community. Are those people just stopping there and leaving? Or are they coming into Weaverville or some of the other communities and spending money? Reports like that are, you know, a great, a great way for me to help you guys. And then not just looking at how you're performing, but as I said, going out and finding communities that have had success in this kind of cultural tourism or with the mountain biking with with recreational tourism and then kind of reporting back to you on these have been the successes. This is how I think you can apply it. So if we have time for a quick Q and A, I would love to get any questions you guys have. And then my my really main questions are what are the biggest needs? What's in the way of getting them solved? And what do you want me to be doing?
Nice.
So, yeah.
Great. Okay, cool. Thank you. All right. Questions of supervisors.
I'll jump in. So I know I sent you a list of things of which these were on the list, and and there were some others. And one of them in particular, we're going to be talking later today about the cannabis program division finances. And that's more internally focused. You know, what do we spend to provide or support the program? I also mentioned, would an economic impact study of having a thriving cannabis program in the county be something in your wheelhouse?
Yeah, so I need, and I'm currently back and forth with our legal department as to what I can do because, as Larry showed, we have the three the three funding sources, and a lot of it is federal. So it's still a little murky as to what I can and can't do, but likely, especially because I'm not, you know, a horticulture advisor, I'm not giving any kind of cultivation advice. I think they're going to say that I can, I can, you know, provide economic research on that topic, but I can't say for sure until I hear back from our 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 legal experts.
Understand. And then from the standpoint of, like, when you and I were interacting with each other, I shared you share with you some examples that I had become aware of, but I know I'm aware of a fraction of what's also out there in the community. What what have you found as the best ways for you to get that inclusive information to you about all the potential things that you might then find those connections between?
Yeah, um, so I think the best way is by being here and then meeting with as many local government and NGO leaders as possible. Like I've came, I'm from Crescent City, so it's about a six-hour drive. So I'm here for the week to meet with as many people as I can this week. I'm going to the Trinity 2050 meeting on Thursday. Yeah, so I mean, obviously, just any, any ideas, always send them email to me. I'm happy to read through them. But for for my own process, I think it's best figuring these things out here on the ground, hearing it from the people that are trying to solve it every day.
And is there a specific set of information you'd like, if somebody's going to mention, for instance, the Bowerman Program? What about that would you like to hear about so that you understand it? Because I, what I'm trying to think of is what could we put out there in the newspaper, on social media, somewhere? We don't really have an economic developments part of our website countywide, but we could figure out a way that we could say, here's the kind of information we need. Here's how you can submit it. We'll get it to Alec. So if you, you don't even have to answer now, but if you can provide that to us, then I can help try to facilitate getting that structure out there so that we can then encourage the participation so that it's not just limited to who happens to see this meeting, who we talk to, but a broad reach across the county.
Yeah, yeah, I I can, I can get kind of like a a general like wish list of what I need to evaluate, you know, and think about a program. But in general, I mean, this, this stuff is interesting to me, even just the history of it, you know, separate, completely separate of work. So information overload me, you know, send anything to me. I love to read and figure out the history of places like this.
Okay, great.
And then just one last question would be, so you're here for this week. You've got one meeting set. If there are folks listening to this who feel like that would be awesome to be able to take advantage of an opportunity to meet with you, is there a means by which they could still set appointments with you?
Yeah, absolutely. People can email me. I can give you my card if that's easier to get it on the record like that. Or call them, all my information is on my card if it's, if it's easy to just go to you and you can put it on the record.
Okay, great. And you're here through Friday? Okay, great.
Yeah, we'll get that out.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Item 1.2, Clerk of the Board, receive an update from US Forest Service Representatives regarding matters of interest in Trinity County. So this morning, we have with us representing our our Tara Jones, our district ranger, sorry, for the Shasta Trinity National Forest. We have Ben Sundell. Thank you.
Okay, good. Guys, hear me? Okay, good morning. Morning, Board. My name is Ben Sundell. I work for the Shasta Trinity National Forest. My day job is the forest safety program manager, but I'll soon be detailing back into the deputy district ranger job for the Trinity River Management Unit and the South Fork Management Unit, much like I had last year in 2022. Rory Jones is no longer in the detail. So this morning, I'm filling in for Tara. Tara's in another meeting in Hayfork. And she sent me some notes this morning. So I'm just going to kind of go through these notes. And then if you guys have any questions at the end of the, on the notes, I'll do my best to answer them. But I believe she said she emailed you guys these notes to the board this morning as well. So here we go. So on the Trinity River and South Fork Management Units, we currently continue to burn piles in the local area. So far this fiscal year, we've burned approximately 150 acres of piles on the Trinity River Management Unit and on the South Fork Management Unit, approximately 170 acres on the South Fork Management Unit this fiscal year. Some limiting factors on increasing that pace and scale has been the weather, of course. That weather has steered us into, you know, not being able to drive in the safety of the workforce. So hopefully, maybe with the warmer storms, the snowpack and the ice conditions subside, and we can get out to those piles and take care of some more of those piles to burn. Again, prescribed burn efforts will continue this week. Today, they're actually be out back in the Lewiston area, Mary Smith area, burning some piles. So that's great news. We have quite a few folks coming from the South Fork Management Unit and the Shasta Lake Ranger District to come and support us. So it's a good forest-wide effort to get some of those piles knocked out and taken care of. I know that's a priority for Tara this year is to get most of that fuels accomplished around the Lewiston area. About, let's see, in February, we did a sort of North Zone Fire Hire event, an in-person event down in Reading at the Red Lion. It was a two-day event, a very successful event. So applicants were able to come in person with resumes in hand, and we had HR staff onsite, and we were able to, with resume in hand, walk them through the USA Jobs Application Process. And across the forest, I think we had a really good tentative offer selection amount of folks. And then on the west side, the Trinity River and South Fork Management Unit, we were able to tentatively offer 21 new positions to help with our staffing needs on the west side. So that was a mix of temporary positions and permanent positions. And we currently are in Phase Three of permanent fire hire to fill some more of our vacant permanent positions on the forest. So we continue to be in a continuous hiring phase as an agency. With the influx of new employees, right now, this week, we have a basic 32 class going on, and that's our basic firefighter training class. We have that going on in Reading. Today is actually their field day up at Shasta Lake in the Lakehead area. And we have approximately 25 brand-new employees going through that class. So when they complete that class at the end of the week, they will be able to support the fire and fuels organization throughout the summer and winter months to to increase pace and scale on that end as well. So it was great to see at least 25 new employees participate in this class this week. So that is, I think all 25 employees participating there are from the non-fire organizations. So resource, ologists, wildlife, and such. So that that'll be great. So if we have, you know, a severe fire season and we're looking for more help, we'll have that trained staff to step in and help us out. So if we have, you know, a severe fire season and we're looking for more help, uh, we'll have that trained staff to step in and help us out. So some priorities that the staff is working on, um, some service contracts for large fire reduction uh work in the August complex fire footprint and in the Lewiston area. Um, we continue to work on contracts and plans for a major road project in the Monument Fire Footprint. Working on NEPA and resource support uh in Trinity County with our local power partners around some other agreements uh that are tied to some significant funding coming in. And we're also working on uh completing uh the Good Neighbor Master Agreement that should be submitted uh at the end of this month. And work has already begun identifying the supplemental project agreements or agreement uh within that Good Neighbor Authority with the county. So we'll see what that kind of looks like, but uh that Good Neighbor uh Master Agreement should be submitted by the end of the month. And then all the minor legwork we're currently working on as well, so that, that's great news. Uh, in the timber uh program area, uh, weather has been a main factor on uh completing some of those projects, so currently the Petty John Project has been delayed. And we look, we're looking at getting back into the groove of things with the Petty John Project, uh, the third quarter of this, uh, this fiscal year, uh, so within the next month or two. And then within the river complex, the harvest operations have been suspended due to weather and road conditions. Uh, engineering, uh, engineering's been super busy. Um, as you guys all know, the, the impacts of the major storms that we've had. Uh, so we have storm patrols and we've been uh going out and surveying our road conditions. So currently, some of the roads that were mentioned, uh, sixteen, forty-seven, sixty are being evaluated for repaired maintenance. And we continuously get new updates daily on Forest Service roads that have been impacted either through storm drains or landslides uh that we will need to address once we can gain further access up those road systems. So uh the engineering aspect is going to be super busy this year, uh, just due to the impact from the storms that we've had. Some planning notes, uh, the Bowerman Area Fuels Reduction Project, the Scoping Letter, uh, will be coming out soon. Uh, this will be a third-party NEPA project and we are working closely with the Water Center uh to help them through the planning process. Shasta Lake Ranger District, the NRA, will be using their, their planning team uh to help staff uh the forest meet the workload of the Trinity County uh Priority Landscape. And then we'll be scheduling a meeting with the High Palm uh Fire Safe Council in early April to address and refine uh the project in the High Palm area. Roadside Hazard Tree NEPA is expected to be completed soon, and I believe that's a regional office NEPA that's coming out. Um, so that roadside hazard tree NEPA should be out soon. Some, some, some financial stuff. Let's see, money from the Trinity County Priority Landscape, uh, which is part of that wildland fire crisis uh funding has started to trickle in and arrive. So between like the Shasta Trinity, the Six Rivers, the Klamath, uh, we're, we're kind of coming all together to develop a plan on how to tackle those priority landscapes that have been identified in the, the Trinity County area and then how they uh interact across all three national forests in Northern California. Uh, the forest, the Shasta Trinity National Forest has also received Joint Chiefs money, uh, which we will leverage to accomplish more critical fuels work on the ground. We're looking at about three million dollars uh to be shared between the Six Rivers and Shasta Trinity National Forest to create that, uh, to accomplish that critical fuels work. And, and our, the fuels staff here on the Trinity River Management Unit and the South Fork uh Management Unit have really looked at this, they helped develop it, develop it, and so we should have a pretty good uh idea on a path forward uh when we start using some of that money and uh some of the work on the ground. So recreation, uh, recreation seems to continue to grow, so we should be close to filling Sally Cousins' old job in Weaverville. So, you know, fingers crossed that goes through, uh, but we're super close uh due to that being a key leadership role on the, the west side of the Shasta Trinity around recreation. And we are currently uh outreach-ing and expect to fill numerous recreational jobs. Um, the jobs opened in USA Jobs yesterday. Um, and to help applicants interested in applying for those jobs uh on this forest, uh, the forest and specifically the South Fork and Trinity River Management Units, uh, we will be holding a sort of like open house for applicants. Um, so in Weaverville on Friday, the twenty-fourth, from four to seven, we'll have the Weaverville District Office open for applicants to come in and we'll look over their resumes and help them out with the USA Jobs Application, just to ensure that they have a good application in the system within that, that portal. And then from nine to two, uh, nine to noon on Saturday, which I believe is the twenty-fifth, uh, nine to twelve, the Hayfork Office will be open for applicant, applicants to come in, share their resume, and we'll have staff on hand to help them through the USA Jobs Application Portal. Uh, we've brought additional staff onboard uh between the Weaverville District Office and the Hayfork District Office. And with that additional staff, we can now sell uh wood permits five days a week out of Hayfork and Weaverville, so that's a huge plus. Uh, collaboration with the Trinity County Collaborative Group continues. Uh, we've had very successful field trips um over the past year or so. More are planned, uh, and the discussions around critical fuels reduction work in Trinity County. Just be kind of flexible and be, be able to adjust on meeting our needs and your needs, uh, specifically around the, the priority landscapes, as we start to unroll those priority landscapes, what it'll look like. Uh, the locations we'll be tackling to uh accomplish some of that work. Um, so a lot more discussions and interactions between the forest, the Trinity River and South Fork Management Unit staff with that collaborative group on those field trips. So uh expect more on that in the months ahead. And just to wrap up the uh, the shared stewardship one, uh, we continue to have successful uh and productive meetings with local partners and stakeholders. Uh, these meetings are paving the way toward a shared vision uh that reduces the threat of wildfire to the communities here in Trinity County. So uh a lot of great work Tara has done on that end. So some staffing stuff, um, so the Deputy District Ranger job is still uh not filled permanently. Uh, Rory Jones has finished his detail. Um, I will be stepping back in as a detailed Deputy District Ranger for the Trinity River and South Fork Management Units underneath Tara. Uh, my detail is scheduled to start sometime at the end of April and last throughout the summer and fall months, much like it did last year in twenty twenty-two. Um, we have a new Harvest Inspector that should be starting here soon on the uh, the west side of the Shasta Trinity National Forest. Uh, we're still looking to fill the Fire Ecologist position, uh, which used to be the Fuels Planner for the South Fork Management Unit. Hoping to maybe detail that and then fly it permanently here in the next few months. Uh, we should have a new GIS person onboard for this side of the forest. And then the Support Services Staff out of Weaverville should be getting a new, uh, obtaining a new person as well, that um that hiring process has just started and we should hopefully have someone selected in the next month or two. So um, as you can see, uh, lots of hiring, uh, lots of new applicants, a lot of new faces between both management units. And, and that's a good thing, so um, uh, increased staffing from where it was a few years ago is starting to, to be in our favor, so that, that's great to see. Um, so conclusion for, for the notes, uh, the Forest Service uh continues to have successful and productive meetings with local partners and stakeholders. These are key at identifying projects and treatments to reduce the risk to communities uh from wildland fire. Uh, during this time of intense weather, we have focused on uh building contracts, agreements and collaboration uh so that when the weather changes, we can move quickly through the planning and implementation processes. And then, you know, back onto that weather aspect, uh, we are going out and doing those surveys uh to identify those critical infrastructures that have been impacted or damaged uh due to the storms. Um, so uh, that engineering aspect has been, is, is going to be super busy over the next few months and more than likely in the summer, uh, depending upon road conditions. So any questions from the report out on behalf of Tara Jones and the Trinity River and South Fork Management Units of the Shasta Trinity National Forest?
One question I have is just, is, is this kind of a very informative update made available online in some fashion? I just think it's, it's such great information.
Yeah.
We're a very small audience, um, and I'm just wondering how that information gets distributed.
So that's a great, uh, great question, so the, the forest is in the implementation process of redeveloping um some of our websites. And um, that would be great if we could share like the highlight notes from each management unit on the public-facing webpage, so I'll bring that up to our Public Affairs Officer.
Thanks.
Nice. May I say something? Yes. When you guys email them a copy of the notes, if you send it to me as well, I can add it to the backup, so the public can see those notes. That'll be there.
Okay.
I have a question. With your, with your uptick in hiring, uh, does it look like we'll be getting a full-time ranger in Hayfork, Latina, Weaverville and Big Bar anytime soon, or or will we stay, it sounds like with the part-time
So
this year again?
So the goal is to hire a full-time Deputy District Ranger at this point, knowing that we only have one planning team, so it's much easier to oversee one planning team with a primary line officer, which would be Tara as a dep- as the District Ranger. And then the Deputy District Ranger is still a line officer that has full authority, such as the District Ranger does. Um, but to, to, to concur, to create consistency and have one voice and one message and kind of like one path to go down, um, at this point in time, due to one planning team, uh, I think we're gonna, the force is looking at sticking at, staying with one ranger and then one Deputy District Ranger. But hopefully, within the next month or two, that Deputy District Ranger will not be a temporary, it'll be a permanent. So you'll still have two line officers on the west side representing all four ranger districts within the management units.
The four that I just mentioned?
Yeah, so the Yolobola Ranger District, Hayfork Ranger District, Weaverville Ranger District and the Big Bar Ranger District. Between the deputy and then the ranger, you'll have two line officers overseeing all four of those districts.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris, do you have anything?
I'm just I'm looking forward to all of the fuels reduction work. I think that, um, golly, it's been a long time coming, you know, kind of re, re-establishing a, a culture of, of both timber harvest and getting out there and fuels reduction and getting those, um, getting fire on the ground has been, has been a lot of work for many, many of years, and so I'm, I'm just really grateful and I'm really excited to start seeing some of these things really, really take root and get going, and I'm also excited for our community to have an opportunity for all these new jobs, and I, I just look forward to seeing that. I know in Salier, when the Hot Shot Crew shows up for the summer and our, and our all-year-round crew, it's just so much fun when they, when all of the folks show up in town and our store lights up. So I know that it's good for all of the little communities where all these employees are going to come into. So thank you for all of that.
Welcome.
So I have one question for you. These, these twenty-five new hires that are going through your Basic Thirty-two Fire Training right now, what does that mean? Is that South Fork Management Unit, Trinity River Management Unit, Six Rivers? What is, what do those twenty-five mean for what our scope and vision would see right here?
Yeah, so it, the twenty-five students are a good mix of all the management units on the Shasta Trinity National Forest. So there's a mix of South Fork, Trinity River Management Employees, and there's a mix of Shasta Lake and Mount Shasta McCloud Management Unit Employees. So um out of those twenty-five, let's just say ten are from the Trinity River and South Fork Management Unit. So when they come back to this side and continue on with their normal duties, um, when we have fires or, you know, critical landscape projects within the fuels organization that we need to accomplish, with this training, they'll be able to step in and help assist us.
Sure. So, and clearly you've got a lot of, of work to do. You've got the almost sixteen million that was from the adding us to the, the list of eleven that were re-identified as needing extra help. And then an extra three million that I read in here. Does this twenty-five, is this sort of normal for, um, however often this training happens? Or does this really represent, um, the outflow of what your recruitment efforts have produced?
I think, I think we're doing a better job recruiting. And I think the in-person hiring events are a huge plus. You know, USA Jobs can be a daunting task to, to struggle through, um, if you're not familiar with it. So I think with the in-person hiring events with uh agency employees and HR staffs having that one-on-one time with the applicants, we're seeing a greater amount of applicants come back as qualified and moving, being able to move through the hiring process. Um, so that's been a huge plus. And uh, so, yeah.
Nice. Thank you for that extra effort and pass that along to Tara and Rachel and others.
Will do.
Yeah, that's great. Good. All right. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right. Health and Human Services, item 1.3, Presentation of the Public Health Emergency: Unwinding and Impact to Public Assistance. No fiscal impact.
Good morning, children supervisors. My name is Tabitha Albers. I am the Park Board Manager for Eligibility and Admin. I have worked for Health and Human Services going on twelve years now. I started out as an eligibility worker before we reclassified the position to Eligibility Specialists. I've held the title of a lead worker. Um, I was an analyst for five years and um a supervisor and recently got promoted to Eligibility Program Manager in June of last year. There is a PowerPoint presentation. Next slide, please. So the onset of the public health emergency, while challenging, it allowed for Trinity County to continue to engage with our customers and provide benefits with an expanded outreach model. Positive changes to our business model included the transition from in-person to telephonic interviewing. This change allowed for the office to maintain health protocols while remaining open to the public. Telephonic interviewing allowed for customer appointments to be scheduled faster and for staff members to successfully work remotely. The use of online portals uh expanded the traditional hours of service from eight to five to twenty-four hours. Customers are now able to file applications for benefits at any time. This is especially helpful as a frontier uh community for customers to uh to reach out to us. Online portals also provided the opportunity for confidentiality to be maintained in outreach campaigns through the use of QR codes, as well as enhanced data collac- collection and record keeping. In addition to these changes, the electronic signatures helped maximize our staff's ability to work remotely. The majority of documents necessary to complete the application process can now be signed via text messaging or through our interactive voice system response. This, again, allows for expedited case processing and for quicker receipt of benefits as it removes the time delays involved with mailing. Over the last three years, a series of administrative flexibilities from the state also improved business practice standards. For instance, program waivers for CalFresh allowed for interviews to be waived if it was considered a complete application. The county also entered into agreements with the state to access income records from customers benefiting for us to verify their income, which reduced the needs of uh verifications. Next slide, please. So administrative support, um, although the public health continues to unwind, Health and Human Services has also experienced an increase in in-person, person office visits. During the last month, our admin team facilitated over five hundred in-person requests and answered over nine hundred phone calls. In addition to managing this lobby and the phone calls, the admin team is our first point of contact for the agency and has the sole responsibility of supporting eligibility and pending our applications for benefits, as well as posting and sorting the mail uh for the agency. Next slide. February two thousand and twenty-three caseload counts. Um, as you can see, currently thirty-eight percent of Trinity County residents are receiving program assistance benefits through Health and Human Services. This is based upon the General Census in twenty twenty. Our eligibility department serves the county with providing the community with access to food assistance, healthcare benefits, cash assistance. As you can see from the caseload counts, all districts are highly representative, but the caseload counts are also personal. District one has six hundred and sixty-four recipients receiving aid. District two has one thousand five hundred and seventy-four. District two has 1,574. District three has 1755. District four has 734. And District five has 381 recipients receiving assistance. Next slide, please. CalWorks, CalFresh and Medi-Cal are the core eligibility programs. CalWorks provides eligible families to a wide range of benefits, including cash assistance, housing and entry to participate with our employment services program. CalFresh provides food assistance to individuals and families, while Medi-Cal provides medical services for children and adults. All three programs are means tested with income and resource eligibility requirements. And all three programs have had an average increase of over 40% during the public health emergency. Again, to personalize these numbers, the CalWorks benefits average is $934 per family. CalFresh benefits is $226 per caseload. And Medi-Cal has over 1,000 beneficiaries who are aged and disabled. In 2020, these cases were managed by nine eligibility specialists. Currently, they are being managed by five as we have a vacancy rate of over 50%. The unwinding of the public health emergency will be impactful. Starting this month, the CalFresh additional monthly benefits are ending. Since 2020, a minimum of $95 in supplemental CalFresh benefits have been issued monthly to each caseload. The loss of these benefits will be heavily felt with our elderly and disabled population who will see their monthly benefits decrease from $281 to potentially $23 a month. Currently, the waiver for CalFresh interviews is also set to expire. This will create longer scheduling times for appointments as the average interview is an hour with staff having availability of up to three appointments per day. Medi-Cal redeterminations were also paused during the onset of the public health emergency. The California Department of Healthcare Services have instructed counties that all Medi-Cal cases will have to have a full redetermination within 14 months. For our county, this means that 3,700 cases will need to be processed. Next slide, please. This is the night, this is the known roadmap for the public health unwinding and eligibility processing. As you can see, starting in June, each month reflects the mandatory redeterminations for the CalFresh and Medi-Cal programs. This does not include the average of 100 applications received each month, the average receipt of 125 semi annual reports and also customers reporting changes to their case. Ensuring that these compliances are met will be challenging. The average training to acquire the skills for an eligibility specialist is a year. Of the five staff members in eligibility, three are within the first year of their training. In order to successfully achieve the Department of Healthcare Services mandate, we have a priority strategy going. We are focusing on awareness through the social media campaigns. We're doing coordinated outreach with partnership managed care. And we're going to do a school backpack flyer campaign. We will also be using ad hoc data to process future dated Medi-Cal redeterminations at the same time we are processing CalFresh recertifications. We've also established a dedicated phone line for the public to contact us concerning the redetermination impact. Next slide. So in all, Trinity County, we have been preparing for the end of the public health emergency and our staff truly remains committed to serving the community. Any questions?
Thank you for your presentation. That's a little daunting.
It's, it's, it is, but the the morale is good. The needs of our agency to to rally and make this happen is there. It's just, it is a lot of work and it it's going to take some efforts for all of us to make it happen.
Indeed, a lot of work and a lot of responsibility.
It is.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, you may.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there anything that that we as supervisors can do in terms of just letting our our folks know in our districts about this redetermination process? How how can we help you just by educating the community within our own districts?
Excellent question. Please do not ignore our mailings. Okay, so for three years, mailings have been sent out, but no action was needed. So at this point, we have our customers who might not know that this year actually means something. In addition, call our office. We have a dedicated phone line. We need to know of any address changes that have happened. Returned mail gets to our office, which means the customers would not know that they have a missing report.
Okay. Is, will you guys have flyers or something? We can put on local bulletin boards or anything?
Yes, we have a series of social media campaigns that we I will, we can share so that we can post within all communities with the QR code. So if you wanted to do it online, you can take a picture and we will get the information that same day.
Nice.
Nice.
I did want to ask, first of all, great presentation. Thank you. And for what you do, the 50% understaffed is that just can't fill the positions or funded? You just can't fill them? Or is it a combination?
It, yeah, we we have had the allocations available. We've actually been continuous recruitment for about two years. So the funding is available. The funding is secure.
Good. At least we have that piece.
Yes.
What is the limiting factor on why you haven't received or you haven't been able to fill those positions?
Competitive salary based upon local market conditions.
And and that again is not determined by any anything that the county has immediate control over, as I understand it, that is really about compensation studies based on parameters dealt with unions, everything else. It's not like we can wave a magic wand and suddenly make those go up.
I wish there was a magic wand. No, it is part of the negotiation process.
Yeah, okay. And the funding from these programs is secure and it comes, it's not general fund money. It's comes from the various sources that you guys have in that organization.
Correct. We are reimbursed via federal and state funding for these positions.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, thank you very much. Could you make sure that you leave some flyers with Ashley or myself for the Douglas City store? More than happy to help.
I can, I don't have them with me, but I can email them to Ashley so they could be presented.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You good? You had something?
Nope. I was just wondering if you would be entertaining short recess before we go.
I would more than happy to. Let's take a, do you need five or 10?
Five's good.
Five minute break. Thank you. Back at 10 o'clock.
It might be four because it might be 45 seconds after.
Could be a potential future agenda item. This has just happened down in Mendocino County where their cannabis program was having a really, really difficult time getting in gear and getting licenses out. They were having a real, you know, similar staff problems as us, similar financial problems as us. Their local trade association wrote a letter to Nicole Elliott, the Director of Department of Cannabis Control, asking for some intervention to help their program get off the ground. They literally have 1% of of their applicants in annual licenses. Ms. Elliott said yes, sent a letter back to their supervisors. They just had an agenda item on this just recently. And the supervisors accepted that that as that offer of assistance. I would suggest that if our financial issues continue being as troublesome as they are now, that we avail ourselves of that also. I would happily collaborate. We have a great relationship through our trade association with DCC. If the county would like some help straightening up the finances, I would happily make that request, Ms. Elliott, and and ask her to respond back to you. So I don't want to go off half cocked or do anything unnecessary. So if that were to be something you might consider, whether, well, just let me know. The board action would come, I suppose, to accept the offer of help. So if there is any anything in the financials that you think the state could help us out with, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adrian, I'm sorry, just that what county was that?
It was Mendocino County.
Adrian, do you know how many licenses they have now in Mendocino?
Well, I know they got one more out so far this year.
Five?
I, I, I think they have a total of 12 out of 800 and something applications.
So with my apologies, whoever said, you're good. If you're finished, we're good. Sorry. I missed a step, so let me circle back. This time is for information for the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. With that, do we have anyone else caring to make a comment?
Morning Chair, Members of the Board, Jake Rossum, Chris Hayfork. I wanted to comment today on the idea of appointing the Planning Commission to handle or to be the Building Department Appeals Board. Under Building Code, on the Trinity County Building Code, Section 15.04.200. I'll just quote it. The Building Department Appeals Board is created to hear and decide appeals of orders, decisions or determinations made by the county building officials relative to the application interpretation of or and interpretation of the county code. I requested this, an appeal to this board about a year ago with Jim Santiago regarding an interpretation of Trinity County Building Code. I was told in writing via email, sorry, we don't have that board, period. I've requested that again recently. Cody said that he'd he'd look into it. I know Ed's in this email thread. I know Tom Blanco has spoken about this in the Planning Commission. You know, we we adopted the state building code in Trinity County. I forget the year. I'm sure Tom knows it off the top of his head. And all of its appendices and when we have interpretations that are directly conflict, are in conflict with state building code, we have the same building code. I believe that's something that that would go to the board. I know that it's hard for us to assemble a random board. Maybe the Planning Commission is the fastest route for that, or maybe it's a a route for an interim board to hear some of these appeals. But it it is is greatly needed. And I I do believe that probably anybody who's dealt with the Building Department in this community feels like, wow, there I had no idea that was there and probably a reason that that's in the Building Code. And I I'd love to see this be a matter that's urgently addressed. Because if if we're all going to be held to the Building Code, I think that we all should be held to the Building Code. But if we can pick and choose what sections we want, I'm also totally open to that. But either way, if this is something we can address, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Tom Belenka, Douglas City. Just following up a little on on what Jake was talking about. I'd love to take credit for discovering this in Trinity County Code. I didn't. But I did verify it is in there. It's 15.04.200. The Building Department Appeals Board, which makes sense. It makes sense as it's in there. I think you know, obviously, we probably don't need it very often. I can peer over the horizon and see when when we finally do get our alternative building code invoked. We just might have some differences of opinion on certain matters. I think a board like that will be valuable. However, I I do think that probably the quickest way between here and there is to maybe a resolution could do this designate when necessary, the Planning Commission as the Building Department review Appeals Board. I think if you look in the code, there's certain qualifications that the board should have. I I think the Planning Commission, certainly our commission that we have now mirrors those. So I I think that would get us without having to create this board and you know, have a meeting scheduled and all that. The same way this board sits from time to time as the Election Board or the various hats you wear. I think this is a fine hat for the Planning Commission. And and I do think it is a valuable thing and it's in the code. So somebody before us probably thought it was a worthwhile thing too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment in the room? Okay, seeing none. Any on Zoom? I have no raised hands and no new chats. All right.
Chair, I just, I know you said that not get into discussion, but we can direct staff. I'm at least interested in having staff come back to us with information about this so we better understand that.
I have already been texting with Margaret just on that. So, yeah. I have already been texting with Margaret just on that. So yes, and thank you for bringing that out. All right, with that, public comment is closed. We will move on to reports.
You don't, you didn't have any on Zoom? Okay, I was just, I didn't, I missed that somehow.
Reports and announcements, item 2.1, reports from department heads. Any department heads in the room wishing to give a report? You seeing none? Any on Zoom? Drew Pobloni. Okay, good morning Drew.
Good morning. Drew Pobloni, Cannabis Division Director. I'd like to just give a quick licensing stats update for you all. We're still sitting at just over 400 Appendix C documents received. And we are currently at 146 approved environmental documents that have been noticed in the paper. And 93 of those have been picked up. And so where we started the beginning of this year trending around a 50% noticed to picked up and active, we're now up to 64%. And my hope is that we will see that number continue to trend upwards and finish the fiscal year at around a 70% rate is, is what I'm using. And that ties into some of the projections that I'll present later on. So, so that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have no other raised hands. Right. Item two, report from County Administrative Officer.
Good morning Chair and Supervisors. I'm gonna put on a department head hat very quickly and just say that I am very proud of Tabitha's presentation and bringing that information to the board to understand the impact of the Public Health Unwinding Plan our department is going to be working through for the next 14 months. The heavy lift is, you guys all saw, and just proud of the work that the team, the collective team does under her leadership. Also with our Veteran Services Officer, Jennifer Dobbs is hosting a town hall today at 1 o'clock at our Veterans Hall. Our officer, along with representatives from the VA Clinic in Reading, will be there and it's open to all to discuss healthcare issues, questions about individual benefits for anyone interested and then presenting on changes. So I wanted you to make, or just make you aware of that. And then in the administration office, we have several items that, you know, we have been working on that are on the agenda today. So I'll wait for those in order. We did complete in the HR Office Loss Prevention Specialist interviews and an offer has been made. And I'm hoping that we in short order have really good news on the other side of that. So slowly and surely moving along. End of report.
All right, thank you for that. Great. Reports from members of the board of supervisors. We'll start with Supervisor Carpenter Harris.
Thank you. One second, let me get that look out. Just since last meeting, I did spend some time in Burt Ranch, visiting with their small community water district there. They're, have received some funding and they're going to be needing, hopefully we can facilitate it, but some support from the county potentially being the lead agency on their SEQA needs for their water district. They've been working for many, 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 many years to get their water system upgraded and it's taken quite a long time and they now have the grants to do that. But they need the county to be able to help them with, as being the lead agency on the SEQA documents. I'm hoping to, to look into that and see if we can, how we might be able to support them. And then I did meet with Assemblyman Woods, staffer and gave her a brief, very quick tour of some of the damages that were done around the Sawyer Heights and Lower Sawyer community and spoke with her about the water district needs on the, for the Sawyer Loop community. And, and they're in the process of trying to get the funding through the state and just ask her if she would be able to help lead, put some voice into that. But other than that, that is pretty much what I did.
All right, thank you. Theresa Goken.
On the 8th of this month, I was at a Trinity County Fish and Wildlife Advisory Commission meeting. We do have some openings there. A couple of members of Trinity River Restoration Program have left due to conflict of interest and Ashley is our secretary there and we are looking for some interested parties. They don't have to be fishing guides or just, just stakeholders from the community would be great to fill those positions. So they can get hold of me, Ashley. Charlie Holdhouse, who's our current president, would be a good person to get hold of. On the 13th of this month, I was at an LPHC meeting, which is a meeting for oral health for children under eight years old. Few things that I found surprising that I didn't know about was 50% of kindergarteners have tooth decay by the time they get into kindergarten. So we're going to try to do something to get some, some help there, a box and a brush thing. And we're also going to have kindergarten teachers start to implement somewhat of a brushing program for younger students to get them into better habits than, than they have presently. So that should be a good thing and hopefully throughout their life that will make their teeth and dental visits a lot easiergoing. We also had a watershed council, I think Hayden was in on that. On the 14th, they do great, great work. You know, we're, we're happy to, to work with them. I can't say enough about that group. They're just very active and a really, really good group to work with. On the 16th, and I think that Rick had mentioned this last meeting, Fairgrounds Board Meeting was held here. Again, you know, I, I can't say enough about the Fairgrounds Board meeting from, from Hayfork. They're just phenomenal. They are present, fully staffed all the time and do just an absolute job. And honestly, what goes on with that group and how they, they get the fair and everything associated with the fair going is unbelievable to me, but they do a fantastic job. And honestly, I can't give those guys enough credit for what they do and gals for what they do. It's amazing. So my hat's off as usual to them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's see. So no Outing County travel. From the airport standpoint, working with residents regarding residential through the fence agreement, these are basically when properties approach on the airport property and special agreements need to be made. And there's been a holdup with that. So I'm working with our Director of Transportation and those folks trying to work through that. PSA Two attended my first meeting with Chair Cox is the Chair of that committee. So I'll let her speak more into that. The Fire Chiefs Association, CAL FIRE was providing updates regarding their new hazard safety maps. Point they were trying to make is while they keep hearing that people are saying insurance rates went up after those maps were released, that their understanding is that the insurance companies have their own mapping systems that may use a lot of the same criteria. But it is their maps and their ratings that are risk ratings versus safety hazard ratings that are really driving the insurance rates. But they did say that you can ask to see exactly what the insurance companies are using to make those adjustments. And then you can evaluate that. They also talked about the AB 38 requirements for people who are selling their properties to have those properties inspected for home hardening and defensible space. And mentioned that they have recently filled a new position, it's a full-time position dedicated to doing those inspections. And they provided an online link where you can request that inspection. It has to be done within a year of selling a property. So people hopefully are finding out about that and taking that action. CSAC, we have a legislative conference and board meeting coming up in mid-April. Cannabis Finance Ad Hoc, my role with that ends today. We'll be presenting the information and so that ad hoc can be dissolved or my assignment to that staff committee ad hoc. Workforce Development Workshop, Trinity Together and I can't remember which other organization we're hosting, but pulled together a great workshop where they brought people together from various organizations that help with workforce development and it was a very well-planned and run meeting. And I think people came away realizing there were a lot of things happening and resources available to them they weren't aware of. And they made connections that I think will lead to outcomes and that I believe is going to be a quarterly meeting. And it was, it was really good to see that kind of happening and that people are recognizing all the different ways they can work together. Completing some training that's appeals related, so for certain types of appeals, we have to have special training. So I'm going through that. Snow maintenance for the volunteer fire departments, a potential solution has been pulled together. And the next step is to share that with the volunteer fire departments so that we can get their feedback prior before that being brought to the board at the next agenda. I just wanted to recognize some community action. Someone brought this to my attention. There's a lot of problems with Verizon being out, which I didn't even know about for a while because we don't have any cell service at our place. But I understand it was a real problem and Brian Poe, an individual in the community, spent hours and hours and hours getting through to Tier Five within Verizon, showing them pictures of the tower before they would finally acknowledge that something was really wrong because everybody else was being told, oh, there's nothing wrong. Our map shows you're fine. And, and so that kind of community action made a difference and I thought deserves some recognition. And then I also wanted to give some kudos to our Office of Emergency Services, the State of Emergency Declaration that we met with about last Friday. Their efforts to get online a tool that allows people to report property damage from the storms, I think is not only a great tool for the individuals to get that information to OES for their own purposes, but it helps OES because they use that information to help make the case to support our declaration so that we get the funding that we need. So I just, I think it's a great resource. It's on their website. They post it on social media. I've shared it. Thank you for doing it and hopefully you'll get a lot of good information.
Okay, thank you. Surprise Fraser.
On the 16th, I went to Eureka for the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District Board Meeting. I was once again, I guess you could say elected, more likely appointed as the Vice Chair of that group. And the, the main portion of that meeting was spent, we had a presentation and discussion mostly about OPEB liabilities and how North Coast Unified is working through that going forward. And if anybody on the board would like any of that information, I did pull some of that out of my agenda packet, kept it. So I can share that with you if you need it, I believe. Other than that, I had Dustin.
Sure. Sure. Yeah. I just wanted to, to say I, I had a, a nice meeting with the Department of Transportation as we continue to try to work through some of our challenges with Garrett Road and the Lower South Fork Road and just keeping updated on the stuff on the Canyon Creek Road. And I appreciate the staff's time and our, and Liz's time at that meeting. And then also I attended the collaborative meeting as the secondary for you on, what day was that? Friday? This week was a whirlwind is partially why I'm, Thursday. And then I also attended a VOAD meeting via Zoom. So this week was busy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I forgot. I missed my notes.
Oh, the only other thing I was gonna ask, and I don't know the appropriate way, Chair, but I have been hearing and seeing lots of comments with people in the community concerned that water is being released from the dam that is because the dam is being repaired. And so they're worried that all this moisture that we're getting is just being let go because poor timing on doing dam maintenance. All my efforts have found that that's not the case, but the rumors persist. And I'm just wondering if we can actually request that somebody come forward that's in an official position to give a formal presentation and put facts out in place of rumors.
You bet.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That is a grand idea.
So I guess just to, to back up what you're saying, that the water is not being released for mechanical restoration of the dam right now. It's part of a vulnerable flow variability action that the TRP has in place right now. So it, it, it does not, I think, I think Paul Hauser spoke to that, maybe in the paper. I read it somewhere, but it's, it's not, they're not releasing water to keep it over the spillway or to fix the rotary gates there. It's a, it's a restoration of variable flow action that's in place right now. I'm not exactly sure why they're doing it, but it is what it is. And I did have a couple of other things now that Heidi just said, other couple of things. Douglas City Fire Department did just get a brand new or new to us, a fire truck from, from Reading. Took us quite a while to get it. We worked hard, but we got one of their older trucks and a few pallets of accessories to go with it. A big giant help to Trinity or to Douglas City Volunteer Fire Department. We also received a brand new to us truck. I think it's a 2019 truck for Fire Chief, Volunteer Fire Chief, which is another huge improvement. And I will give props to those guys who are really working hard. We've got a great volunteer fire department there. It's growing every day. It's getting younger in age. Really, really doing, doing a good job there. So I thank them a ton. And if there's any questions about, and I received the same amount of questions probably you do, Rick, on the water releases and the fixing of the, the dam and all that, feel free to, to steer them towards myself. Perhaps Heidi too, as, as we may know more than the average person about what's going on there since we're on the TMC and interacting with the Trinity River Restoration Program on a regular basis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So on the 8th of March, I attended the RCRC meeting in Sacramento. So on February 17th, this was the bill introduction deadline for the first year of the 2324 Legislative Session. And if we haven't had enough mind-blowing statistics for the morning, I'll add one more. There were 2,632 bills that were introduced timely, the highest number in more than a decade. 40% of those were spot bills or intent bills that are placeholder measures that don't have substance yet, but that still leaves 1,579. So measures that RCRC is sponsoring that would be of interest to us. RCRC has proposed expansion of CAL Recycle's Illegal Dumping Program to cover illegally dumped hazardous waste. That bill was introduced by Assemblymember Hoover. And then AB 1548 was drafted to respond to an experience coming right out of Trinity County. As a part of Senate Bill 54 discussions a few years ago, RCRC tried to figure out what some of the barriers are to local recycling. Based on those discussions, they tried to find sources of CAL Recycle grant funding to get locals the sorting, baling and aggregating infrastructure to get recyclable materials into the marketplace. I know, I feel the excitement coming right over here. Unfortunately, the scenario wasn't covered by any of the state's grant programs. So when fund, funding was finally available at the federal level, the minimum grant award was set far too high to be of assistance. They have also worked into the bill clarifications as to what types of projects can be funded to help locals meet CAL recycle edible food recovery requirements and included a component that seeks to provide seed money for locals to develop reuse programs that divert solid waste from the land bill. So we are in, Diane Reader and I are in conversation with Sean Kennedy, who is RCRC's political lead on this. He has drafted a, a suggested letter. Diane is putting some refinements to that where she sees fit. And we should have that on a board agenda to lend our support for that bill, for your consideration at our next meeting. RCRC delegates participated in three days of meetings in Washington DC and key areas of discussion, among many, included funding opportunities available through the Bipartisan Infrastructure Law and Inflation Reduction Act and reauthorization of the Secure Rural Schools and Payments in lieu of Taxes Program and also cannabis banking. And then bills that could impact the pace and scale of California's forest management. There are several of interest. I won't go into them here, but I will make those available for Supervisor Lute Weller to present to the Fire Chiefs and also to the Fire Safety. and also to the Fire Safety Council.
Thank you.
And then, let's see, the disaster council meeting last week. Just so impressed with our OES Director Philip Simi and HHS Deputy Director Mike Katani. They just did such a thorough job of covering needs, collecting operational concerns to make adjustments. We're going, that would improve our services going forward. And just those meetings are always, I've been to a whole two. And they are so important, so critical to how we respond in the future. And I just really appreciate that intentional means of collecting data and having those conversations that in moments you can't have, and later it's important to circle back. So thank you for that. PSA two, I am continuing. This is my second year as Chair of that committee. They just do such important work for seniors. The direct service partnership with Dignity Health Connected Living that coordinates with the Weaverville Church of the Nazarene was started as a pilot program probably six months ago. I lose track of time. I should have grabbed that date. It started with 20 participants and now it has increased to 50. All home delivered meals. They deliver one hot meal and one frozen meal on Tuesdays, one hot meal and two frozen meals on Thursdays. And so now with congregate dining opening up under, under the guidance and rules, the church has expressed an interest in facilitating the indoor dining for participants for two days of hot meals. There is a transition right now to finding a new program manager, but the pastor and a trained volunteer are willing to carry out this important position until a new coordinator can be established and onboarded. That is the end of my report. So moving on now to the ad hoc reports, the Good Neighbor Authority. Meetings are moving forward. I met with Tara and David Kolbeck and Kelly. Why does her last name escape me? No. Apologize to her. Think of it. Just working through some more details of this. And I, I do just want to take a brief moment to manage expectations a tad because I have been leading the charge in great hopes and excitement. And not that there, that there aren't, but there are components of this that may take a bit to implement. One piece of that would be administrative costs that are written into the agreement as a default that will take a little time to prove otherwise that then can be changed. So while, while it is an amazing opportunity for us, I just want us to proceed with our eyes wide open that this is a document that will last us 10 years and it may not, it, it's not going to show us all of its potential straight out of the gate. So it is being wrapped up. There is a supplemental project agreement that's included in it. So the master authority, the master agreement is kind of like the umbrella. And then the supplemental project agreement, that's the one that identifies a project and has the money tied into that. So as Ben Sundahl reported out earlier, that should be submitted to grants and agreements by the end of the month so that we can hopefully have it through that process before that system becomes a bit bottlenecked with so many that will go in, into there. And that is the end of my Good Neighbor Authority report. So on to the strategic plan. Supervisor Lou Wiler.
Yes, so work continues in that area. A little bit halted by the fact that I was supposed to be facilitating a meeting on Friday morning and we were still in our board session. So they met without me and worked on the template and the guidelines that had been laid out. But, but we are continuing to meet. We're meeting every other week and trying to get things ready for when Trent is here so that we can hand him off something that is, if not absolutely complete, very well close to that so that he can put the final touches on it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Trinity County Water, anything from that ad hoc today?
No, nothing yet. We are, I've been in contact with Tom Stokely just about a few things. But we're still in the infancy stages of that. I think we are kind of waiting for Trent to come on board where we can kind of get this thing going and talk to Humboldt County and their delegates about how we'd like to move forward. Maybe with us working with them in a, in a way to get a good resolution to this 50,000 acre feet.
Okay, great. Thank you. And cannabis ordinance? You've shared a bit.
First.
Go ahead.
So we had our, Supervisor Fraser and I had our first meeting with staff and consultants last week. But that was not the start of the work that that group had been doing. So the work was well underway. I believe that a first draft of updates, proposed updates to the cannabis ordinances are expected this week or next. Also confirmed there are two public workshops that are planned and those would be to take place before the matter became before the board. So this will be rather than public and private and all that ad hoc meetings, the ad hoc is really working with staff and consultants to put something together. The public workshops are designed to have very interactive, in a more engaging way than we can do here in the boardroom to get public feedback about what those proposed changes are. And we're also talking about potentially trying to solicit some of that feedback while we're working on what we're going to propose. So that we're going to try to keep that as transparent and engaging as possible. Also looking at developing some kind of clarifying statements and frequently asked questions so that we can just try to be as clear as possible. And as we've seen in a lot of times when cannabis ordinances are on the agenda, it becomes a very controversial scary thing to a lot of people, whichever quote side you're on. And so we're just trying to anticipate as much of that and, and move through it efficiently.
All right. Additional to your report?
The only other thing I would, would add to that is that we do have another meeting scheduled for this Friday where we'll actually meet in person with, that'll just be county staff and Supervisor Lou Wiler and I to move forward on that some more and try to get the ball rolling. We're still kind of feeling our way into it right now. We haven't really got established.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Economic Development, I'll let Supervisor Lou Wiler take the lead.
Well, I think one of the things, just to understand, we've talked before about that we've been reaching out and trying to identify resources that are available to us. And the presentation that you saw today from the Cooperative Extension is a good example of that. That was an organization that has always been available to us. And yet, when we reached out to them, their representation of Trinity County was, well, you've been disinvested. And what that meant when you asked for clarification was, well, you've never asked us for anything. And so, and I'm sure never is not the right term. So it's great that we are finding these resources. We're raising our hand. And, and as, if you were watching early, you heard part of what we're really trying to do in this ad hoc committee is engage with people and try to get as many people in the community that are truly interested and willing to invest time and resources and everything in economic development looped in with all these resources so that isn't single threaded. There are so many organizations and so many individuals that are trying to do great things in the community and we're just trying to bring the resources together and, and provide some structure and focus. And, and then work continues with both private citizens, state regional resources. I'm still, I'm excited about more of the detail that we heard dramatic today, but also the Economic Development Director that we spoke to with RCRC. I think the work that he's offered to do on our behalf will really help us bring something together that's cohesive and clear enough that, that it can start to probably make a lot more sense to people than just the dialogue that we have right now.
Okay, I'm going to leave it at that. The report back from Bob Burris, the RCRC Economic Development Staff Member, is also what I'm waiting for to decide what next steps are going to look like.
Great.
All right. Moving on to the Staff Committee Report. You shared a bit. Do you have more?
On cannabis finance part? Well, Drew, I believe will be leading us through a presentation. I think just to set the stage, I want to explain, there was a lot of work that went into this because it's not only trying to find a way to clearly communicate the realities of the financials because there's a lot of opinions about the financials. And I think we wanted to get it as clear and as factual as possible. And not only where we've been and where we are, but also where we think we're going. And, and that is a little bit of guesswork, but it's educated guesswork. And so that's what you're going to be hearing. And, and more than anything, I want to set the stage when we're, the result, the reason that we're having this is because the board is being asked later today to make a decision about funding. And that funding request is not because additional expenses are coming out of the department. It is because the revenues are not flowing into the department. And that is because of the program implementation required by the settlement agreement. It says you must go through all of these stages before you can operate. Well, that meant that everybody had to halt, do all that work before they start taking up their license and, and producing, which means all the revenue stopped. That's why we're having this discussion in the first place. And I just wanted to be clear because sometimes it comes about, oh, well, they're, they're just spending too much money. Stop spending it. They're, they're spending exactly what they said they would spend and they're doing what they said they would do. But the revenues aren't flowing outside of their control for the most part.
Okay. All right. So we do have, and my apologies because it's twice now I've introduced this upside down. A Staff Committee Report needs to be directed to the staff member who's in charge of that, not the supervisor who's assigned to be of service to them. So we do have Division Director Plabani ready to give his report out.
Thank you, Chair. I think Supervisor Lou Wiler did a great job sort of introducing the item and summarizing what our primary objectives have been. So I don't know that I have too much more to add other than I look forward to presenting item 5.1 to you all for your consideration later on today.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Moving on to the Consent Calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide them now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar? See none in the room?
I have no raised hands, no shouts.
All right. So we will close public comment on that. I will be pulling items 3.5 and 3.14. Any other board members have items to pull? 3.5 and 3.14.
I don't have an item to pull, but I would point out that item 3.1, 3.6, there is a typo that should say July 5th, not July 7th, but it is correct in the background information.
Okay, thank you for that catch. Counsel, do we need to handle that? Or is it, can just be considered as a typo and we're good?
It can be considered as a typographical error.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. All right. So, you know, we should probably read this differently. 3.5 and 3.14. It always seems weird that 1.14 comes after and I think of decimals and they're not, they're actual numbers. So, and would anyone care to make a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
I'm going to approve the balance of the consent calendar.
Hold a second.
All right. Motion by?
Chair, just for clarification, did you pull 3.7?
Did not. Do I need to do so? Do we need to do so because we have? And that's going to be tricky. So, yeah, okay, let's pull it. We'll talk about it. Thank you. 3.7. Yes. All right. So Supervisor Lou Wiler, would your motion then to be approved, the balance minus 3.7 as well?
Yes.
And Supervisor Gogan, your second agrees? All right. So with that.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. So item 3.5. So this is a request, adopt a resolution giving. Okay. Excuse me one moment. Will I gather myself? All right. I just had a matter of order. Okay, thank you. Adopt a resolution giving signature authority on all federal contracts and other necessary documents for financial transactions, and adopt a resolution giving signature authority on all state contracts and other necessary documents for final transactions. And I'm going to defer to counsel on this if you would please. Yes.
I'll tell you guys what, I'm 3.7. So the request was made or the, the document that is within the file does not have a retroactive component to it. It's typically done prior or right as the new chair and vice chair is sworn in. It appears to have been put on late. And I just wanted to confirm it's the intent of the board to cover the entire term of the board members. And if so, we would just want to put a line in there saying retroactive to the date that you were appointed to that position.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from board members? All right. With that, could I have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve item 3.5 as amended.
Hold a second.
All right. Thank you. Motion by Supervisor Fraser, second by Supervisor Lou Wiler to approve as amended.
Supervisor Lou Wiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Fraser?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. And now for the one that's going to be tricky. Who find, item 3.7, find no objection to the issuance of a daily alcoholic beverage license to the Rotary Club of Weaverville to serve alcoholic beverages at their Dreammakers Gala and auction to be held at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Weaverville, California on April 15th, 2023. We have three board members who are members of the Weaverville Rotary.
Thank you. I know this matter, I almost pulled because three potentially have a conflict here. Just to give you some information on the process when this occurs, because it does occur at times. If three board members declare conflict, and the requirement is that you have a majority of the board approve an item, such as this case, the Brown Act actually has a provision that allows for one of the members who's recused to participate in it and, and not have a potential for a conflict. The process you go by, which is typically you, the three members who are more who recuse themselves will draw straws. Whoever receives a straw, that is, you know, the longest or the shortest is allowed to stay and vote on it. And then it's presumed from a legal perspective that they do not have a conflict. Now, I do not have straws, although I usually do carry them, but I do have pieces of paper, one of which has an X on it. And the clerk of the board can have you randomly select. And then whoever has the X is allowed to stay.
Okay.
Again, if you declare a conflict.
Okay.
And is, is that the, the only way that that selection can be made?
It must be done by a random process.
It must be done random. Oh, okay.
It must be done by a random process. Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna say, two of us are on the board of Rotary and one is not. So I thought the one that's not, but if, if random is what we're supposed to do, then.
Correct. If all three declare conflict, it's an equal conflict regardless of your status. Now, in this case, it's, it's a personal decision whether you believe you have a conflict. If only two board members feel they have a conflict and may step out, then we're fine. But if all three declare conflict, then we'll, we'll proceed with the process and I have them ready for the clerk.
Thank you.
Well, I, I would say I don't feel like I, I have a conflict, but I don't want the perception of a conflict. So I will recuse.
Right. I as well.
I as well.
Get your straws.
One thing quickly, Chair, and we forgot this on the last item. You do need to open this to public comment.
My apologies. Thank you for the catch. Is there any, I'll open public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Recusal first, so those that are recused step out of the room.
Yeah, fair. Thank you.
Next question for counsel. Now, who's the chairman of the board?
Well, we'll see how this turns out.
Yeah, exactly. One of the extras could be for them, so.
Well, I got the X, so we're good.
You're saying?
So that means I stay. All right.
That answers the check question.
Okay. With that, I will now open this item for public comment. Is there any in the room? Any on Zoom?
I have Keith Grove's on line.
Keith, are you able to speak?
Sorry about that. I too, uh, uh, the previous, uh, that you didn't go to public and I asked for a point of order but was muted. So I think you guys need to come up with some sort of plan if there's a point of order. And I know that's not this item, but, but I'm still behind. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. My apologies for that. Can I circle back at some point and reopen public comment on that? Um, can I circle back at some point and reopen public comment on that item? And I will do so after we finish this item. Any others with raised hands on Zoom?
I have no other raised hands, no new shots.
All right.
I will make a motion to approve item 3.7.
Will you open it for comment?
See, we had public comment.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion, excuse me.
Now you may. Mm-hmm.
It seems odd that this is the best way to resolve something by. I know it may be the only way is to add someone who has a conflict of opinion back into the voting on something that they have a conflict of opinion with. This may be the only legal grounds to do this, but is there no other way to, to, we're inviting someone who has a conflict of interest into voting on something they have a conflict of interest on?
Absolutely. So, so I'll just tell you the, the background on it is that, um, in kind of governments, you have to have a majority for something to be approved. If you, and it's the majority of the board of supervisors, not a majority of those who are present. So when we drop below a majority, and that happens when more than, more than three members, or three or more members recuse themselves, there's no way to move the item forward. So when the legislation was creating the Brown Act, they contemplated that potentially happening. And so what they, they did was put it in to make it a random, um, person who can return as opposed to, um, as opposed to having it specified or having it selected. And that way, the concept is that it creates some level of neutrality on that. Um, this can't be done if there's what we call a 1090 violation or a violation of, um, monetary. That, that means that item just can't move forward. But on conflicts of, um, of interest, which are just, um, additional relationships or additional relationships with an organization. Um, this is the only way that the Brown Act and the law contemplates to allow it to move forward. And the other option would be that we just couldn't hear the items.
Understood, but not understood.
All right.
That's the way we can do it.
All right, so, um, any further discussion?
I just wanted to clarify who made the second on that. Was that you? Okay, yep, I'm good.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
All right, if someone would. Supervisor's back, great. All right, while they are returning, I'm going to circle back.
Uh, I think, I'm gonna jump in here, but, so I think we ask counsel, do we, should we actually make a motion to reconsider item 3.5?
Correct, yes.
I would, at this point, if it's the right time, I will make a motion to reconsider item 3.5.
Thank you, a second.
3.7 approved.
So coming back. So now I have to open public comment on the motion of reconsideration. Is there any public comment on the motion of reconsideration? In the room or online?
I have no raised hands, no shots.
Um, all right, with that, we have a motion and a second, if you would please pull the board.
Motion to reconsider. Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
All right, with that reopening of this item, um, I would like to open public comment, which I failed to do, my apologies. Any public comment on item 3.5 in the room? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no shots.
All right, that we will close public comment. And move on to item 3.
We'll have to vote on that again.
Really? So sorry. Wow, I think punishment enough. I will not forget to open public comment again. All right, uh.
I move that we approve.
And I will second.
We're moving to approve as amended, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right. Item 3.14. Adopt a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for local law enforcement sheriff realignment, Department 8561, increasing revenue by $70,210 and transfer out by $148,923. Approved a budget adjustment for fiscal year 2223 for Sheriff, Department 2281, increasing revenue by $93,000, transfers in by $148,923, services and supplies by $139,923, interfund expenditures by $36,000 and fixed assets by $66,000. Increase in Sheriff's General Fund appropriations in the amount of $241,920, $241,923. Current cash balance is the local law enforcement sheriff fund 561, $424,055 and 19 cents, and current cash balance in the sheriff's general fund, 110, is $336,412 and 41 cents. The reason I pulled the item is simply that I was unavailable to reach staff yesterday. I was able to reach them this morning and, um, just clear my confusion in that this appeared to me to be a general fund ask, which it is not. But I was guessing that if I had that question, perhaps somebody else would have that question. And so I've asked, uh, Mary Treese from the sheriff's office to just simply give it a simple explanation of the item, just so that we have clarity for the public. So Mary, thank you for entertaining my request.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Mary Treese, the business manager of the Trinity County Sheriff's Office. Happy to answer your questions on this item today. Um, these are three different revenue sources that we're asking to spend funds against in this fiscal year. The first is the crops growth funding and through, that passes through Department 8561 for a total of $148,823. Um, some of that revenue was received in fiscal year 2223 and some in prior fiscal years. So that, those funds have already been received. Um, $65,000 of it is through VSBC Prop 64 grant funds for the purchase of a vehicle for our school deputy that is helping in the, in our local education system. And those funds have already been approved by, um, the VSBC Grant Committee as well. An additional $28,000 from state aid to fund an employee wellness program. Um, that's brand new to us, um, and we're working, we'll be trying to complete that project also this fiscal year. So just to clarify what Supervisor Cox was asking this morning, um, this is not contingency fund request. This is just a request to send these specific funding sources.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Appreciate it. Any questions of board members? Any public comment in the room? And any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no shots.
All right, thank you. With that, I will close public comment, bring it back to the board, entertain a motion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Hold a second.
All right, motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Frazier. Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll need a break, be good.
All right, moving on to public hearings. Building and Development Services, item 4.1. Conduct a public hearing to consider taking the following actions concerning the county buildings and construction ordinance, Title 15. Number one, find the adoption and implementation of this ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15061B3, common sense exemption, which applies to projects where the activity will not result in a significant effect on the environment. Number two, introduce and waive the reading of an ordinance establishing Trinity County Code Section 15.26 regarding electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining, no fiscal impact. And I would refer this item to our associate planner, Skylar Fisher. She's on the line.
Hello, yes, um. Oh, okay, there I am. Hi, um, this is Skylar Fisher, Associate Planner with the Trinity County Plan Department. And I'm going to spend the next few, um, minutes discussing item 4.1, um, the electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining ordinance, um, as just described by Chairman Cox. Um, so this item, um, has been before, um, our county board of supervisors a few times now. Um, but I think it always benefits from a brief recap. So where this draft ordinance came from was a combination of Assembly Bill 1236 and AB, um, 970 from the state, um, which requests that, uh, local jurisdictions streamline the permitting processes for electric vehicle charging stations, um, to limit the review of these types of permits to, uh, like health and safety requirements to create that expedited timeframe. Um, part of that, um, as referenced in AB 1236, is that there be a checklist with, um, certain criteria um, that jurisdictions must meet to be considered streamlined and compliant. Um, part of that also is a checklist, or it's like mostly like an application with all of the required questions for those who would like to submit, um, an electric vehicle charging station permit over at the building department. Um, so in order to meet this requirement, um, county staff worked with, um, representatives from rural county representatives of California and the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, or GO-Biz, um, to draft the ordinance based on the template ordinance that was developed by the state and to update that, um, aforementioned checklist application, um, to be, to be consistent with the checklist, but also like add, you know, the Trinity County heading, make sure that it was something that could be, um, navigated by and looked okay, um, for our, um, potential applicants to use. So as I mentioned before, this item originally went to the board, um, back in December, so December 6th. Uh, it was then continued to the December 20th and then the 29th board hearings. Um, after this, um, after the 29th meeting, um, the board moved to have the Planning Commission review the, uh, project to see, um, which zoning districts would be most compatible with electric vehicle charging stations. Um, during this time, there was an amendment to the second to last preamble, um, for sake of clarity for language, because I remember when we were going through it, it was kind of like very clunky. Sorry, I got a little too excited to mute it myself. Um, so there was some clarity added there, um, so that it was easier to read. Um, and a few other admin changes, which were tracked, changed when presented to the Planning Commission. And so this item went to the January 26, 2023 Planning Commission, um, where the Planning Commission voted to find all zoning districts eligible to consider ways to encourage electric vehicle charging stations in the counties, uh, such as not increasing taxes on parcels with electric vehicle charging stations improvements, and to adopt the current checklist and ordinance as was at the time of that meeting. Um, since then, the item returned to the Board of Supervisors, um, on February 22nd, where the board voted to amend the draft ordinance to add an additional line to Section 15 point XX point 40, which is permit application processing, which states that commercial EVCS applications will be streamlined in commercial zoning districts, C1, C2, C3, HCI. All others must obtain a Planning Commission issued use permit, which later that, um, language was clarified to instead be obtain a conditional use permit. After this meeting, for the second, uh, reading of the ordinance on March 7th, 2023, that's when the, um, language was clarified in that, um, aforementioned section that was added to be a conditional use permit. In addition, there was, um, an amendment to Section 15 point XX point 20, which is definitions, to add, uh, bullet C, which is a commercial charging station, means a standalone charging station intended for profit. So since that March 7th meeting, um, the most recent draft of the ordinance did go to, um, a representative from GO-Biz, which, um, as mentioned, is the Governor's Office of Business and Economic Development, in which they, um, reviewed the ordinance for consistency, um, with Assembly Bill 1236. And there was some concern from the representative, um, regarding the intent of the aforementioned Assembly Bill, which was to, um, eliminate barriers and expedite the processing for all, um, electric vehicle charging station permit types. There, there is, the, the intent is to have, um, a future discussion with them, but that hasn't happened yet. Um, and this item was engendized for this meeting, but I figured I should add it in. So the full record of what's been going on, as far as I, as, as much as I know, I want to, of course, share. Um, and the two aforementioned, um, amendments are included within the packet and are highlighted to pop out for emphasis.
Thank you.
Um, so all of that being considered, um, staff's recommendation based on the proposed, um, amendments from the board is to find the adoption and implementation of the ordinance to be exempt from SEQA per the common sense exemption, and to introduce and waive the reading of the ordinance, um, establishing Trinity County Code Section 15.26 regarding electric vehicle charging station permit streamlining. And I can answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Skylar. Any questions of board members? All right, with that, we will open the item for public comment. Any public comment in the room? And seeing none, any on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no shots.
All right, we will close public comment, bring the item back to the board. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I, I move that we approve as submitted.
I will second.
Right, we have a motion by Supervisor Lutwiler and a second by Supervisor Gogan. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, uh, picking up on what, uh, Skylar was sharing. It was interesting to see, uh, it didn't take long at all for us to get a response back to the changes that we were making. Um, they, the state representative didn't feel were appropriate. And, uh, my view, uh, open to others, is that we go ahead with approving what we've done, and then we can have our conversation that's already scheduled. And if we need to bring this back and make another change, we do, but we don't hold this up yet again. Um, we go with what we put together. That's my thought.
I agree.
So great.
All right.
Um, I just, I, for the record, another thing that came up, and then I have to attribute this to Adrian Keyes. Um, after our last meeting, when I said I wanted to put it on the record that, um, we believed that it would pose a public health and safety risk to put these in zoning that they don't belong in. Adrian emailed me and said, what about public restrooms? And that would be another thing I think needs to be on the record. It's like if we're going, going to allow these in a residential area without a public restroom being required, that does pose a public health and safety risk. So I think that, um, we do have some legal standing on why we made these changes, whether the state agrees with them or not, there is, um, there is a health and safety element involved here.
All right, thank you for that. All right, with that, Ashley, you can pull the board, please.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Chairman, may I say something before we leave this? Uh, I just wanted to take this opportunity to, um, thank Skylar, uh, she's still on, for her, uh, great work on behalf of the county all this time. I understand that she'll be leaving us soon, which I am very sad about. But I, I just didn't want this to be our last board meeting with you and not have the opportunity to say thank you. And we know that you have done a tremendous job, uh, and a very difficult job because of being, um, not supported as you should be in terms of being fully funded department and having people around you. And then there's been some very difficult issues, and the way that you've handled everything has been exemplary in my view. And I just thank you very much.
And I'm so happy that you paused us for this moment because in my board report out, and it's far more fitting here than it would have been had I remembered. But Skylar's hard work on behalf of broadband expansion in Trinity County, um, Skylar, do you want to share that yourself, or I don't want to steal your thunder because it's pretty exciting?
Well, I, I'm pretty excited about it, too. Um, we, uh, got a notification from CPUC yesterday stating that Trinity County had been awarded, um, the grant for, um, pre, uh, pre-construction planning, um, broadband, um, expansion within the, um, communities of High and Palm, Forest Glen, and Post Mountain. So that's very exciting.
It's an enormous amount of work watching this process move through and, um, what this required of Skylar throughout. I am, I'm just so proud of you and thankful to you. So congratulations and, and thank you. And yes, you will be. I am, I'm just so proud of you and thankful to you. So congratulations and thank you. And yes, you will be dearly, dearly missed.
I just want to say you're sharp as a tack, honey. You've got a bright future in front of you. You have just such clarity in your speaking and your ability to pull information up with every question is admirable, and I predict you will have a grand future.
Thank you.
And again, Skylar, thank you very much for everything. You've been great. You've worked hard for the county. You have a big future ahead of you. We're going to have a hard time filling your shoes. Again, thanks for everything you've done. We really, really, really appreciate your work that you've done for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Nice. Thank you. Madam Chair, before we move on from this item, and yes, to echo all the compliments that Skylar has received, I've enjoyed the last few months and just recognizing her work as well. I'd just like to confirm that should the board engage the state on continued conversations on this matter, that we include county council's office, as these are legal issues. Absolutely. Thank you. And I didn't realize that. I, I didn't even realize, honestly, it was the representative from RCRC pulling this in. So thank you for that. And we don't even have a confirmation of that meeting yet, but I will certainly send you the information on the proposed date and time. And if that doesn't work for you, we will move it. Yes, thank you. I need one moment, please. All right. Solid Waste, item four point two, conduct a public hearing to consider adopting a resolution which establishes a schedule of fees for waste disposal and provides for appropriate exemptions and credits for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual solid waste parcel fee billing. No impact to the general fund, estimated revenue of nine hundred thousand dollars to the solid waste enterprise fund. And we have our solid waste director, Diane Rader.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Deputy Director of Solid Waste. This is your public hearing that's first in the series of three to adopt the annual solid waste parcel fee billings. It is the billing that we send out to property owners and businesses for helping to free the cost of the solid waste disposal system. There are basically no changes from any prior years in it, except for the elderly low income income limit for the household is increased to twenty-nine thousand one hundred sixty this year. So there is a credit available for people that their whole household is below or at that level. The billings are going to be sent out in-house this year so that we can probably, hopefully, reduce some of the confusion we had last year with the billings that we had sent out. So we're going to do it in-house and try and keep it more under control so it's not so confusing.
Okay.
The bills will be sent out mid-April and will be due June thirty. And after that, they will be delinquent. There will be a hearing in June for any protests of items that we cannot resolve in questions when we send the bills out. And then there will be a delinquent hearing in July. And I think that about covers it, unless you have questions.
All right. Questions of board members?
I just noted you indicated there's no increases this year over last year, just the increase in the qualifying income for one category. Have these rates been consistent for years?
Yes, the parcel fee, the last time it was changed was in nineteen ninety-four, when it became a hundred dollars per unit. And it was, it's a benefit assessment, so it's not like a regular fee that you can just change the fees on. And it's a benefit assessment that just is, the people that are paying it, they receive the benefit of the system that's operating, the landfill closure and post closure maintenance. And it just, it spreads it out to the property owners and businesses that operate within the county for that.
And so clearly, the cost of doing what you do has gone up a lot since nineteen ninety-four. And I'm sure there are things that we would like to be able to do that we don't currently, recycling was mentioned earlier, always gets me excited. But do you recover all of those kinds of increased costs in the fee structure that has to do with specific like pickup and drop off and all that rather than here? Is that, is that what's going on? I just want to make sure I understand.
It's a two-tiered system where we have the parcel fee that collects the infrastructure support, and then to actually operate the day-to-day part of the transfer stations, which there are nine throughout the county, then those are done with the tipping fees, which is the other that's included in the ordinance that is passed with the other county fees.
Okay.
And then the routes themselves are self-supporting, and we charge that just with, it's based with a tipping fee, but then there's services and equipment that go on top of that to have that be supportive of itself.
Okay. I, I, I still just have trouble wrapping my head around how we can have almost twenty years with no increase. Trust me, I don't want to pay more, but I want you to have the money you need to run the business for us.
It's one that if, that one was, the last time it was changed was before Prop two eighteen and twenty-six, I believe it was, went into effect, and a lot of people were considering fees like that taxes. And it has to go through a two eighteen challenge to be able to change that number. And it's more feasible and more efficient to just use the tipping fees on it so that you can just leave that as the supportive base of it.
If that gets you what you need to do, what you do for us, that's great. Thanks.
Hey, other questions? All right. With that, we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room wishing to comment? Anyone on Zoom?
I have no raised hands, no jaws.
All right. We will close the public comment, bring this back to the board.
Move that we approve as submitted?
I will second.
Right. We have a motion by Supervisor Lutwiler, second by Supervisor Gogan. Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Supervisor Lutwiler?
Aye.
Supervisor Carpenter Harris?
Aye.
Supervisor Frazier?
Aye.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Right. Does anybody need a break before we move into county matters? Ashley, would you like a break? You could. All right. Moving on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request that an item be heard out of order. Are there any requests to change the order? Right. Hearing none, we will move to item five point one. Cannabis. Discuss the current status of the cannabis department's budget. Give direction to staff regarding providing a general fund contribution or advance, and authorize the CAO and auditor to sign any budget adjustments necessary based on the direction given. Nine thousand seven hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars from the general fund in the form of a contribution or advance based on board direction. And we have our division director, Plobani.
Good morning, Chair Supervisors. Drew Plobani, Cannabis Division Director. So I'd like to start today with a little bit of background. It was certainly a collaborative effort to it was definitely a collaborative effort amongst, you know, all of the members of the staff committee. Specific thanks to Supervisor Lutwiler for supporting the process. And so in hindsight, I would have liked to potentially see this PowerPoint presentation organized in a different fashion. But I will do my best to weave through the documentation and hopefully give you enough background so that you all can make an informed decision on this agenda item today. Excuse me. So just a little bit of sort of historical background before we jump into it. The program started in fiscal year sixteen seventeen, and the first license was issued in October twenty sixteen. It wasn't until fiscal year seventeen eighteen, I believe, that the account eighty-two thirty-nine was set up. And so in the backup today, you will see that there is a PowerPoint presentation, an Excel spreadsheet that's broken into four pages, and there are revised, the revisions to the budget workbook for cannabis, and also the, I forget what the fourth document is called, but something that was prepared by Susie Hawkins as, you know, required for this transfer ultimately. So sort of looking at the broad historical trends of the cannabis program, fee revenues have ranged from a million and a half to roughly two and a half million dollars per year since the inception of the program. I think Supervisor Lutwiler did a nice job sort of giving us some background in his report to the staff committee earlier. One of the things I want to point out is that in twenty nineteen, the TAA lawsuit happened. And so the county settled and then failed to comply with the settlement. And the culmination of that was the court ordered program shutdown, which happened in September of twenty-one. And so one of the things that's not seen in the spreadsheet is essentially, you know, we can see the historical trends for those two fiscal years leading up to this one. But I just kind of wanted to give a little more background as to how it's happened that we've had such a significant reduction in revenues. And so I believe, you know, in twenty twenty or so, it was acknowledged that, you know, CEQA wasn't being complied with. And at that time, leading into twenty-one, the standard had been that for a license renewal, program participants were required to pay the full license fee. And so sometime, I believe in early twenty-one, staff made the decision to accept half down in lieu of a full payment. And so that is sort of what started the trend downward in terms of, you know, where we've been teetering in the one and a half to two and a half million dollar range in fee revenues from the beginning of the program. That was sort of a, you know, that half down created roughly a fifty percent reduction in revenues at that point. And then in March, and then again in June of last year, the board authorized staff to develop and utilize the credit refund worksheet, which then off, essentially for people that had paid for a license fee, and the license was cut short by that September fifth or September seventh, twenty twenty-one program shutdown date, that the, they would be credited the value for the number of days that they lost on their annual license. So that's sort of the background, and that gets us into, I guess we can go to we can go to the spreadsheet, I guess. So
This is my, right?
So here you can see, this is the spreadsheet that we created, and there's quite a lot of information. So I expect that you all may have a number of questions for me. I'd like to clarify if your preference is that I try and work through the entirety of the presentation before questions, or if you'd like to be able to jump in with questions throughout the presentation at your pleasure.
I would prefer that you work through it. We'll save questions for when you're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if you, can you, can all of you supervisors see this up on your screen? So if I, if Ashley scrolls around or, okay. So if you look at the leftmost column, essentially what we have here are the account numbers. And these account numbers parallel with the way the budget workbook is presented. And so you'll see that in some of the accounts, like small cultivation licenses, medium cultivation licenses, license transfer, and now storefront retails, those essentially would all have historically been shown as revenue to account six, four, four, eight. And so, you know, you can kind of see if we're looking at these two historical columns, fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, that in twenty-one, twenty-two, the revenues for cultivation licenses were eight hundred forty-one thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars. You guys, feel free to tell me to stop and yeah, I'm going to jump into it. I'm just going to give this introduction so that we don't have to jump back and forth the whole time.
I'm not seeing the eighty-one thousand you're talking about.
Eight hundred forty-one thousand.
Oh, eight forty-one, I'm with you. Thank you.
Okay. So that, that kind of, you know, shows this trend that I'm referring to in terms of what happened due to the program shutdown and where we finished the last fiscal year. We can, I guess, jump into the PowerPoint now. And I apologize because it's sort of tough to, you know, jump back and forth to reference such a big spreadsheet and the PowerPoint, but I'll do my best.
That's okay. We'll get there.
So we are going to save key findings to the end. We'll jump to the next slide. So this is, these are just some of the items essentially that, you know, have been identified and have been highlighted. So as a result of the TAA lawsuit and settlement, general funds were contributed to the department in order to pay for that, as I understand it. Additionally, you know, historically, eighty-four thousand dollars roughly in shared attorneys' fees have been refunded associated with settlements of code enforcement citations. So that's something that cannabis pays for, but as I understand it, when a settlement happens, some of those funds are returned to the cannabis division. Our ask for today is the nine hundred seventy-one thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars in general funds. And primarily, this is a result of budget preparation and not taking into account the half down and then also the credit refund worksheet, which has essentially created a, you know, seventy-five percent plus loss in expected revenues where when, when the budget was approved, we just sort of threw a fifty percent reduction from two point four to one point two. And as we go through the spreadsheet, you will see that we're expecting to receive less than five hundred thousand in revenue as a combination of, you know, all of these things. So as it relates to some of the other broad topics, you know, over the course of the last several years, there's been three point one million dollars in code enforcement fines generated. And from the beginning of the program, there's been three hundred and four thousand that has been generated in tax, cannabis cultivation tax, that has, you know, gone into discretionary general fund dollars. And as part of, you know, this, this task, we've projected what we think the tax revenues will be. And that is, you know, pushing one point five million. And that would be, you know, for this spreadsheet, we haven't, we've, we've projected that the program will be fully functioning pretty much by fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. So if we are, if, if the program becomes fully functioning before then, then these tax revenues would, would come to fruition earlier than we've projected in the spreadsheet.
And Drew, just, just clarification. When you say fully functioning, functioning now, you mean fully all, all the functioning now, you mean fully all, all the permits filled out and all that.
Sure. Yeah, functioning at the, at the cap of the program.
Thank you.
Yep. So here are some of the highlights. You know, I just sort of mentioned cannabis tax. There hasn't been much collected during this fiscal year. I believe the year to date has maybe gone up slightly since this number was given, but it's still pretty insignificant. And okay. And, you know, the result of that, my understanding is that essentially as part of Measure G, the way that it is constructed, program participants needed to have both a local license and a state license in order to be required to pay the tax. And so with the program shutdown, most people did not have a local license. And I believe County Council gave guidance on that some months ago in terms of the fact that if they didn't have a local and a state, then they were not required by Measure G to need to pay those taxes. Cannabis fines, essentially looking at the projection that we've created, the five hundred and thirty-one thousand that you see carried from twenty-three, twenty-four into twenty-five, twenty-six is a combination of the outstanding roughly three point seven million dollars projected to be collected over the next several years. And then the next row is general plan update fees. And we have collected just over one point six million to date. And this, the way these numbers are calculated is roughly showing the progression of small cultivation licenses that we expect and that thousand dollar general plan update fee for each of them. Next slide, please. So there's a, there's many pages of key assumptions, so I may breeze through some of them, but, you know, I'll try and highlight the most important ones. And I think that many of them may answer some of the questions in terms of how we've arrived at these numbers. For the tax revenue projections, I tried to really dive into exactly how many licenses of which type we have and come up with a conservative production metric for, you know, production across the board. Where I landed was that a easy number to use was four hundred pounds a year. And one thing to note related to the way that the tax measure is constructed is that it's a biannual reporting period. And so that, you know, to give an example, product that has grown in the fall of twenty twenty-three, for example, until it is sold, they're not required to pay tax for it. So if what has grown in twenty twenty-three isn't sold until, let's say, the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, then they wouldn't be required to pay tax for that production until the mid-year reporting period in twenty-four. So this last slide is showing two hundred and eighty-one active cultivation licenses at the end of this fiscal year. That number was generated essentially, as I kind of mentioned in my director report out earlier, that, you know, we've been seeing the trend of where we started the beginning of this year with roughly a fifty percent conversion from notice sequo documents to actual licenses that have been picked up and paid for. And so, you know, we're right now at roughly sixty-four percent. And my hope is that we'll see that increase as we get closer to the growing season. And so this two eighty-one is assuming that seventy percent of the projects that are in the queue will have become active by the, you know, by June thirty-first. And then one to two approved active retail licenses and, you know, roughly a hundred additional applications between cultivation licenses and additional non-cultivation license types. And then these are just basically, you know, given a little more refined detail in terms of what's presented for the projections, excuse me, through the, throughout the spreadsheet, four hundred and seven active licenses by the end of twenty-three, twenty-four, five approved or active retails and, you know, just assuming the potential of roughly fifty active applications again, you know, for non-cultivation license types. And so we sure show the trend going upwards with essentially five hundred and thirty being, you know, reaching that cap by the beginning of twenty-six, twenty-seven. I would assume that, you know, there's probably going to be at least a ten percent turnover rate year to year. I wasn't able to, you know, base that in any historical numbers, but I think that's probably a fair assumption, if not a little bit low. Some of these, some of the other key assumptions, you know, that were created and identified for the preparation of this spreadsheet is that I think the hope is that legal fees will be reduced as we get through licensing the majority of these program participants. And I think the hope is that yeah, there will be, there will be less lawsuits against the County of Trinity as it relates to, you know, issues with the program going forward. Code enforcement costs could have been offset by code enforcement fine revenue received. This, you know, I think historically was at the direction of the board and these fees were established in the way that they are currently. And the spreadsheet doesn't reflect any changes to that. Also important to note that the licensing fees and the projections do not reflect updated costs based on the results of our time study and upcoming fee study. Getting into the departmental revenue, we've, we've based the revenue projections on the average cost of five thousand dollars per small cultivation license. That is the majority of our program. And then that last, that last assumption just being, as I've already stated, that we expect to see, you know, the program capped out at the very latest by twenty-six, twenty-seven. So diving into a little more detail on departmental expenses. Susie was kind enough to break this down for me and she was a great help throughout this process. I certainly couldn't have achieved this level of information without her help. So here we're just kind of talking about, you know, salaries and benefits for division staff and, you know, calling out the fact that we split our accountant with environmental health and building. We also split the cost of interim deputy director Presley's time. And that we have, you know, a code compliance lead and then code compliance specialist and three environmental compliance specialists as far as the cost increase to staff, we ran a six point five percent increase for each fiscal year going forward. Moving on to code enforcement, the original budgeted expenses for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three were six hundred seventy-seven thousand four hundred and ninety and that was based in, I believe, the historical trends up to that point. The information that we had available to us shows that potentially that is trending down and therefore the amount was reduced to five hundred fifty-four thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. But if you look at the spreadsheet again, the way we're projecting these costs for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-five, twenty-six assumes that we will continue the same level of expenditures going forward. We, we sort of got into breaking down the difference between code enforcement costs, code enforcement related legal costs and then litigation related legal costs. All of these are reflected in account number twenty-three ninety-nine in our budget. And, you know, it's a bit difficult to break out exactly what is what. So Susie went through and refined this information so that we could sort of separate those costs and have more clear insight into where those costs come from. So, you know, according to the information that we had available to us, these expenses have been trending down over the last couple of years. And the estimated amount for this year is eighty-five thousand. For the projection into the future, we've rounded it up to an even hundred thousand. So here we're kind of diving into a little bit more, you know, the breakout of code enforcement related legal costs and litigation related legal costs. So we are projecting ninety thousand dollars for this fiscal year. Again, that's being rounded up to a hundred thousand and projected through till fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The additional licensing related costs are, that are also all included in account twenty-three ninety-nine are util- Okay, yep. So not all of them are included in twenty-three ninety-nine. Some of them are included in twenty-three ninety-nine and lumped together with code enforcement, legal and all the rest of the interfund transfers. The other related costs are utility bills, office expenses, the professional services for the environmental consultants, publications into Trinity Journal, trainings, refunds, charges and the rest of the interfund transfers to other county departments.
Can I pause you for one second?
Yes.
What should I be looking at in order to distinguish what you're telling us department why it's twenty-three ninety-nine versus other things? Trying to follow that? Am I supposed to just follow in concept or am I supposed to look for something specific?
Well, I think the more specific breakdown would be available to you in the main spreadsheet.
It's coming. Okay.
Yep.
Right.
So we'll, we'll pull that back up and then we can go through with specific questions on the spreadsheet if that works.
Julie, I think you have a copy of it in front of you probably. So in the Excel spreadsheet, there's a section that says departmental expenses. So then each one of those categories that we talked about in the PowerPoint presentation has its own little heading there. So it's the bottom, the last row in departmental expenses is what we're talking about as far as other, everything else. And that includes the account number twenty-three ninety-nine that Drew's giving you isn't really relevant necessarily to the discussion that we're having today. That is more, that's the account number that we use in our general ledger in our budgeting for where, how we categorize those ones. For example, office expenses get categorized under account number twenty-two sixty. That's irrelevant to the discussion that you guys are going to have where we account for them.
Okay.
You just need to know kind of what they are.
Okay. Fair. Thanks.
Consultant fees, did you comment on that? I think that's what you were about to cover when we got the question.
I think we cover that more specifically later on in the slides and key assumptions. Give us a sec to get back up to the right slide. All right, so go. So looking at sort of total revenues that are generated as a result of the department, you know, as I've kind of mentioned, our projection for tax revenue for next year because of the sunset or the reduction to cultivation taxes that the board authorized, we're basically seeing, you know, a fifty percent reduction. Something that's important to note is that because it's a biannual reporting period, the way that the tiered tax rates were, were approved in Measure G essentially means that for someone that, let's say, produces four, four hundred pounds per year, it may be that likely they aren't going to pay, well, unless they sell all four hundred pounds during one reporting period. And in fact, it would need to be four hundred and one pounds, I believe, for them to pay a hundred percent. So what ends up happening is that if, you know, there's four hundred pounds produced and it's split up over two reporting periods, they would only be required to pay at that tiered level, which is fifty percent of the total tax rate. And so because the, the tax, no?
Want to clarify?
Yeah, just for clarification. So we have gone rounds and rounds on this and we have been giving guidance from council. So in a particular period, so they would need to do an adjustment form. So let's say that four hundred pounds and they only sold two hundred of those pounds. So during that period, they are, they transferred four hundred pounds. So they are going to be in that tier. We're more than likely they'll be in that last tier. So they are going to pay for that tier. They would do an adjustment, but at that time they're only going to pay for what they actually sold and have been paid for. And so then in the following period, then they would pay what it was because crossing periods and all of that. So we're accounting for it with adjustments, but they are not, we're not doing it that way.
So let me, let me clarify my terminology and then we'll see if we agree. When I'm saying sold the product, I'm referring to transferred. So if they only transfer two hundred of the four hundred during a reporting period, then am I correct that they're only required to pay that amount that was transferred? Okay. So that, that's what I'm trying to say. I apologize for
When you're saying periods, I'm like, no, no, no. We just went, we've gone over all this. So
So, good? Okay. So the result of the fifty percent reduction basically means that for people that are, you know, using this four hundred pound example, they're paying half of the total tax rate. And then that's being cut in half again because of the fifty percent reduction. So that's why in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we really still don't see tax revenues ramp up because for the majority of program participants, my expectation is that they're going to be paying twenty-five percent of the tax rate. Does that make sense to you, Terry?
Well, if they're paying, if we, the bar is we've reduced it by fifty percent. And then what I'm hearing is the staggering of sales allows potentially for that to be reduced by another fifty percent because each time you're selling, you're under a threshold that if you went over that, you'd pay more, but if you're under that threshold, you'd pay half.
And it's the tiering of the tax rate that creates that?
Right. So
Does that make sense to everyone? Okay.
The board's decision to reduce that over the sun, you know, to reduce for a period of time. And then the way that the code is written for those, that staggering to be able to lower the impact of the taxes.
Right. Okay. So we're basically just showing a trend, you know, moving upwards towards, you know, a fully functioning program. Business is active and the, the projection is that in twenty-five, twenty-six, we, we may see one point four million in tax revenue collected. I know Terry doesn't think that that's possible, but I'm going to go with an optimistic look at it and assume that, you know, people have now been out of business for eighteen months. I think most people have invested their life savings to get to this point. And my expectation is that they will continue to, you know, proceed in their current endeavors and business operations. So and then, you know, now we have retail storefront. And so I threw some numbers at that based on some discussions that I had with some of the applicants for, for retail licenses. And we're looking that, you know, very conservatively, those retails might do roughly fifty thousand dollars a month, which is six hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year. And at a tax rate of two and a half percent, that's how we've arrived at these numbers along with, you know, the assumptions as to how many retails we will have in the county. Fine revenue. This revenue has decreased significantly. We brought in one point one million in fiscal years nineteen twenty, seven forty-eight in twenty twenty-one, three hundred twenty-six thousand in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and only a hundred and one at the time that these numbers were entered, a hundred and one thousand so far in twenty- at the time that these numbers were entered, a hundred and one thousand so far in twenty-two, twenty-three. The projection of the amount that will be collected based on fines, code enforcement fines going into the future is essentially a rough calculation of the three point seven million that we have outstanding, um, assuming that we will only collect from half of those people and that we will see a thirty percent reduction in that dollar amount that gets paid out to the collections agency to pursue collections on behalf of the county. I guess we can go to the next slide. Um, so more other revenues generated as a result of the cannabis division and licensing program. The majority of license types pay, have paid and are paying a thousand dollar per license per year, general plant update fee. And as I stated, I think earlier, we've received roughly one point six million to date. I think I've I've sort of covered these these next set of numbers in terms of how we're projecting how many small cultivation, medium cultivation, nursery, distribution and manufacturing going into the future. It's anyone's guess at this point who, you know, who will continue forward with old applications that have been stagnant. But I think we do expect to see those fifteen medium cultivation licenses become active at some point in the future. Nursery remains to be seen. Distro and manufacturing, you know, one thing I'll point out is it relates to manufacturing. We still do not have a county-approved fire plan reviewer. And so I will likely bring that agenda item forward specifically for us to discuss in the near future. And then, you know, I think I've run through all the rest of these. So if we can jump back to the findings. These are presented in no particular order or certainly not in the order of importance. General funds required to offset the cannabis program's revenue shortfall this fiscal year could have been offset by previous years um fines that were collected and or in a different, a number of different, you know, mechanisms. There could have been different financial planning to arrive us at a place where we weren't asking for the better part of a million dollars, but but that's where we are presently. As I understand it, you know, the the majority of these code enforcement fines and the code enforcement program, i- if that's the correct term as it relates to you know, pursuing action against illicit cultivation was created and adopted sort of along with the cannabis ordinance. So that's that's something that uh was sort of created as a as a beneficial side effect to the cannabis ordinance itself. One of the other key findings is that we don't expect to um need any additional general funds, you know, for this coming fiscal year. And I think that that trend is reflected sufficiently in the historical data in terms of, you know, how much money the program has generated with license fees over the past several years. It was nice to see that through this process, I think, at least on our staff committee, we came to the conclusion that uh the net financial impact of the cannabis program has been positive to date and that there's been a significant contribution, you know, both to county coffers programs and the broad economic benefit that cannabis cultivation has to Trinity County. And then obviously, you know, something that's pretty significant for our general plan update is that uh cannabis fee payers have paid in one point six million dollars so far for that general plan update. And I think that's probably a pretty significant help to to get that done finally. And then we'll jump down to the recommendations. So um, or would you guys like to talk through questions from the spreadsheet first before I I present these recommendations, any particular?
Name your boat, whatever anybody wants. I have questions already.
Well, the small question, you know, we refunded the cultivators for that portion of the season. They weren't able to grow.
Yes, so that is what the credit refund worksheet um created. And so to give an example, um, if someone got a license that uh became active on, let's say, October first, twenty-twenty, their license period would have extended through October first, twenty-twenty-one. And so um, all of the participants that were in good standing during the beginning of the twenty-one season received an urgency ordinance extension letter that in most cases um cut off people's license prior to with the October first example, they would have lost a month. And so the refund was calculated based on the number of days that they lost and what they had paid for, you know, from twenty to twenty-one. And so that's, that's the way that it works. If that, if that helps to answer your question.
Yeah, do we have an amount on that? Dollar amount, do we know?
How much it is per day?
No, how much?
How much total?
Total refund.
I do not have that information um in front of me. I apologize.
Oh, sorry. So it says here that the general plan has received one point six million dollars from the cannabis industry. Um, as a general question, I guess, what other departments, people have put into the general plan? Do we know?
I believe that it's any um license or permit that the county issues. And so I can say that I have seen some planning um permits and I believe that fee is seventy-five dollars.
One more time, Suzie?
You need to use your mic, Suzie.
Building permits.
Uh, building department permits also have a general plan update. General plan update fee component associated with them. And they pay into that. And I I apologize, I don't have that number broken down, but that all of those general plan update fees go into the general plan update fund, um regardless of their source.
Is that fee anywhere near one point six million dollars? Do you think? I'm not asking you for hard numbers, just roundabout.
No, I don't think so. I believe. I don't. I know I looked at those numbers a while ago, but I've looked at a bunch of other numbers and I'm not sure which ones are jumping out at me. So I don't want to report those. I I can look them up and get that back to you at a later date, but I I don't have that right now. But I would say it's not.
Even close.
I can't say that either because I don't know.
Would it be fair to say that the cannabis program funds the majority of the general plan?
Um, likely, yes.
And one other question I have, just general, seeing the slight uptick in cost per unit, we'll say of cannabis. Sorry, seeing the slight uptick, we should probably see not in this copy here, but reflected over time, perhaps in general tax increase to go along with that?
Um, no, because the tax rate is based on a a price per pound and doesn't have anything to do with market value.
Might be more grown because it's more valuable to sell, but the tax rate is per pound, not per revenue.
Right, not a percentage of the revenue.
Right.
I would just some, I I guess some comments. Properly, for many people, this is more than you ever wanted to know about the cannabis financials, but the the hard work that these folks did was to help not only the board, but the public understand fairly clearly what has gone on financially, where are we financially, why are we are where we financially? What do we expect in the future with documented assumptions that people can hopefully have some kind of confidence in to say, okay, these weren't just made up numbers, these were made up, we were developed through these carefully thought out assumptions. We can have the debates about whether the assumptions are right or wrong. We had them ourselves working on the program. Uh, but but that was the intent of trying to do this. And I think the biggest part of it was when this first came to the board, there there was the question that if nobody else I asked was, well, if you're asking for a million now, are you gonna be asking for a million next year or a million and a half or five hundred thousand or what? And so this process, uh, as painful as it may have been to get here, gave us so much better information about what really drives the revenues, the expenses of this program. And besides what happens within the department, which is all we're deciding about. We're deciding about what goes into this department to help fund the operations. The, all this information about tax revenues, general plan funding, um, fine revenues that go into the general fund, those are all to the county outside of that division. But they only exist because of the division. And so without this cannabis program, those funds wouldn't have existed to this point and they wouldn't be coming into the county going forward. And so that I think was a a key part of trying to get what is the full picture? Um, because it isn't just what happens within the cannabis division and financials, it's what happens as a whole to our various funds and financial. Uh, and then as Drew said, we don't even know. And I mentioned to Alec, the economic development guy today, I would love to know, have an impacts, uh, an uh economic impact study on having a viable thriving program in the county because that then goes to everything we read in the paper about, you know, stores struggling because money's not flowing through the community as much as it used to, all those sorts of things. But that right now is still that. Well, you make up your mind because we don't have an economic economic impact study. But here at least, we have, I think, some very well-developed and thought out and supported projections.
I I would say this isn't more than I ever wanted to know. I would say it's everything I ever wanted to know. And I really appreciate the time and labor that it has been to spend through this. Um, Suzie, thank you. And Drew and your team, Ed. Rick, I don't want to leave anybody out. Thank you. This is huge and it it really does bring the clarity that we need to make a a well-informed decision. So.
And thanks for establishing the staff committee so that we could have a collaborative effort to do this because it would have been quite daunting for me to try and.
Oh, for sure. Yep, yep, absolutely.
So back to um recommendations. Final slide. Um, so we've identified a nine hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollar shortfall for this fiscal year. Um, we've presented four options for your consideration. Option one is transfer approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in exchange for the cannabis building asset. And then transfer the remainder, five hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars as an advance from general fund to be repaid over the next five fiscal years. Option two is essentially the same, except that the transfer of the five hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars is in the form of a contribution instead of an advance. Option three is just to transfer the total number, nine hundred seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars as an advance. And option four is to do that same transfer in the form of a contribution. I think we can stop there. Um, if you guys want to look through the spreadsheet, um, ask any specific questions about that or have any other questions, um, at your pleasure.
Um, okay. Are there questions of board members at this time? Or what are you feeling you need time to look at something or? Okay. Then um, if that's the case, then I think I.
I just one, one question that for Drew, but for Terry, I, you know, I saw the head nodding and shaking and so forth when we're talking about the tax revenues. So and again, we have assumptions, they've been debated, but if you would like to weigh in as the person who, you know, has a piece of authority about what actually does and doesn't come in in tax revenues. I I think if nothing else, if you could give the board some sense of, I feel like that tax revenue number is maybe inflated by fifty percent or something like that so that in general terms, we understand, uh, because right now it's all just, again, based on some hard work, but not your input necessarily.
So one thing that I have privy to that's not shared with everyone else is I do see the the reports that we get from the state. So we have over three hundred and fifty-five state licenses that are doing business, that are making transfers, but we are not able to actually tax those because they do not have a county license. So, but even with those numbers, so I don't feel that the numbers are are accurate. And so if you're assuming that everyone's gonna sell over that amount, the folks that we had when everyone did have licenses, we were not in that ballpark. They were not selling over four hundred pounds.
Okay, the the ballpark is the four hundred pounds?
Well, that's, that's, I was going off of what he had in there. That's not what I use, but that's what what Drew had. And so um, they were not in that fourth tier. The majority of the um, everyone that was reporting when we initially started this, when everything was rolled out, it was, they remained in the first three tiers. There was only a literal handful that I could probably count on one hand that were in that last tier. So I don't feel that that's an appropriate number to use. But the other piece of it is, and I need to touch base with him, is on how many licenses are we actually basing these numbers on?
So that's in here.
That's all been covered in key assumptions, but I'm happy to go back through it. And then I want to clarify that this four hundred number is an annual production metric. And so the way the calculations have been established is that everyone would fall into that second tier of producing two hundred because likely they would break it out between two reporting periods. So the assumption, the the assumption is not that they're gonna be paying the full tax rate being four hundred plus. The assumption is that they're paying the tax rate at the production of two hundred pounds or less for each of the biannual reporting periods.
Four hundred total, but at the tier two because of how that staggered.
Right.
Yeah. But but it's helpful to understand. So but if you had to ballpark and say, so I would cut it in half, what what would you? Any ballpark you want to say?
When he's saying a million dollars unless, I mean, it's very rarely that you're gonna have any sort of program that's gonna max out ever. We've had these discussions repeatedly, but so I'm assuming that when you're basing those numbers and in government, I never base it on the max. That's just not good big business practice. That's my opinion. So um, so I think that's highly inflated. And so I think if we're basing numbers off of that and that's general fund revenue that's going back, I just, I'm concerned.
Okay.
Is kind of where I'm coming from. So.
Do you have a?
Oh, I just say, and and again, if we, if people want to look at it again, we can, but the the Drew's assumptions are documented to show how many licenses of which types each year it's based on.
At the end of each year?
At the end of each year and which I understand, you know, before, after, during, all that makes a difference, but this is a broad brush look. Um, but it is in there and it uh it actually never shows it maxed out. It's never five hundred and thirty. Most years are in the three hundreds, four hundreds, uh, back to all, nobody goes over four hundred, four hundred and seven, four hundred and sixty. Um, so again, could still be hopeful. We don't know. But if, I guess if three hundred and some are operating within state rules right now, we don't have very far to go to get to four hundred.
That are active, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. But thank you. I just want to make sure we heard your thoughts on it too.
So I I just want to clarify for for you, Terry, and everyone else, because perhaps, you know, there's a lot of information presented, so I just want to go back over those numbers. For twenty-two, twenty-three, we're saying that we're gonna ideally end with two hundred and eighty-one active cultivation licenses, which as I said earlier, is seventy percent of the applications received. And with the expectation that we will have gone through the environmental review of everything in the queue by the end of this fiscal year. The assumptions for twenty-three, twenty-four as it relates to tax revenue is that we will have four hundred and seven active cultivation licenses, twenty-four, twenty-five, that we will have four hundred fifty-seven. And then that maximum tax revenue that you see um, in twenty-five, twenty-six assumes four hundred and sixty-one active cultivation licenses and an additional five approved um active retail licenses.
Alright.
So Drew, just a quick question. I don't see any storefront retail tax in here as a to the general fund.
So storefront retail um is, I've, it was covered in these key assumptions and it is also a separate line item in the spreadsheet. And it's assumed a fifty thousand dollar per month revenue, so six hundred thousand dollars per year for each of those storefront retails and the tax rate being two point five percent. And so um, I'll give you some numbers, Liam.
While he's looking for that, when I was looking up information on this, uh, if you look at a county number, or I mean, a state number, the average cannabis retail. the average cannabis retail had revenues in the three to $5 million a year range. And so this 600,000 seems to be a conservative number, but we don't, we don't know yet. We'll have to see as we get experience.
So in 2324, we're estimating, uh, 45,000 comes in from retail revenue at that two and a half percent tax rate. In 2425, we're saying 75,000. And in 2526, we're saying 125,000. And that's based on, I believe, um, and assumed six cultivation licenses by, or I'm sorry, storefront retail licenses by 2526.
Seems light to me. I think that they would generate more than that, much more than that.
I agree.
I think that's a, an underestimation, in my opinion. But estimations are what we have to go on. I just think that, that one, what I'm seeing seems to be on the lighter side. Sorry. Seems to be on the lighter side of things.
And, and I would agree with Rick that I think the, you know, data from the state at large indicates that retails do a much higher, gross revenue per year. That being said, there's never been a licensed retail in Trinity County before, and we really have no historical data to base, you know, an assumption on. So I went with a conservative number. And you can of course always update this going forward, um, once we do have, you know, historical trends to reference.
A question for the sheriff, if I could. When, I know that seems a little bit odd, but when we're looking at, I mean, we're, we're banking on a, a code enforcement projection. Do you have staff to support this work to be done?
Uh, good morning. I'm not quite sure to understand the question when you're talking about staffing. I currently staff, uh, uh, three positions within the code enforcement unit. Um, so I don't understand the question with regard to the existing budget at 670,000.
I, I, and maybe my question's totally off base, but to what I'm looking at, I'll try again. There, there's projected revenue that will come in if code enforcement activities take place. Correct?
Yeah. I, I don't make any assumptions on, on revenue. I, I have nothing to do with revenue on code enforcement.
I, I can.
I think I can help the sheriff answer that question. The revenue that's projected to come in, the fine-based revenue that's projected to come in is, has increased significantly. But that's based on their past activities and that outstanding amount that we have due. We have only estimated another to receive $100,000 in current collections. So we are expecting that their, their code enforcement activities are going to stay status quo, which is why the budgeted expenses for code enforcement have stayed status quo, and that revenue amount has stayed status quo. The additional 431,000 dollars that's showing in that line item is an anticipated collection on the outstanding 3.7 million dollars. Okay. From their prior year's activity.
You're right. And Drew said that. So thank you. Got it.
And the funding part two, I think to clarify, Sheriff, as I understand it is you have court enforcement personnel. When they do cannabis-related, illicit cannabis-related code enforcement, that then is charged back to the cannabis division. That's how they pay for a portion of those court enforcement pieces. And then the fees, as you said, yeah, I think it's a pretty conservative view that even though there'll be a, a fair amount of continuous fees, or I mean, uh, expenses into the department because of code enforcement, we're not counting on a lot of income from it. We're just, but we want to have a number there for both. And, and as Suzy said, the biggest number that we show in there is that we actually have issued almost $7 million in fines, collected about three. And 3.7, we haven't been able to. So we're getting a collection agency. They're going to hopefully be able to get, again, conservatively, 50% of that money. We'll have to give them 30% for getting us the 50%, and that's the number you see there.
Thanks.
I think I, I think that's all correct. Yeah. But there is a separation though, as far as the sheriff's office, uh, the code enforcement uh, is strictly that, is code enforcement. We go out there, we take care of the violations. The violations are then cited. They have a period of time in which to, uh, to take care of that citation. If they don't do it within that period of time, then it is forwarded to county council. At that point in time, we are done with it as far as the sheriff's office. Then, uh, if at certain point in time that is not taken care of, then it goes on to the point uh, where the individual or the entity then is, uh, required to pay the fine. Those fines then that are generated is what is going off on the other side of the house. I have nothing to do with that. So.
Okay, fair.
And I'm happy to provide some numbers on that, just so we can understand. So the cannabis, uh, program in 2022, there was 170 parcels that were cited. Of those, 150 came into compliance within the seven days, meaning we would not be charging them. Um, so we were looking at approximately 20, um, citation or fines and fees that we were receiving from the, that program in 2022.
Thanks. That's helpful. Other questions? All right. With that, we will open up for public comment. Anybody in the room wishing to comment?
There's not going to be any public comment on this.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. I'm happy to, to get this going. I would strongly suggest choosing the alternative four. Um, I think that the cannabis program, well, I know that the cannabis program has paid its way, um, wholly up until the TAA lawsuit. DA lawsuit, um, largely caused by mismanagement of the program at a county level. I don't think that at any point, any, uh, program participant like contributed to the shortcoming in our program. We've paid our bills. We paid for the IR, all of our ordinances. When, and the projections also clearly make it, um, or make it quite clear that the program is beneficial to the county. I could certainly go on for a long time on this one, but I will try and keep it concise. I'm certain other people want to comment. Um, one of the key findings I'm not entirely sure about is the reduced legal costs. There are some of the, some endemic issues in the way the finances have been managed that I think are questionable and could be called to light, um, relative to proposition 26, which doesn't seem to be very well-known in Trinity County. From reading through that, it would appear that some of the inter-fund transfers are not legitimately part of a fee structure, but would be considered a tax underneath proposition 26. And I, I'm, so I'm, I'm a little fearful that that legal cost wouldn't come down as much as, as it is stated in there. Um, as far as the rest of the assumptions go, they are assumptions. No one can ever know for certain. You know, we had a lot of people lose products to fires last couple of years. Those are real hits to real businesses. They're owned by real people. Um, I, I believe that there is no, no way to quantify how much an individual should owe any, any governmental body in the form of tax before they've ever created a dime off of that. And in fact, they've invested everything that they have in it, into that product, and then they're just lost. There are so many other key elements to this conversation about how the funds are, are used, what the cost will look like in the future. When, when we hit, when we get to this point where most farms have been through environmental review, and then we're going to be looking at an hourly essentially fee-for-service permit in the future. I just hope that the county isn't over allocating and overestimating what their funds will be and causing a budgetary shortfall and possibly loss of staff. Um, I actually wanted to begin this with thanking Skylar for her efforts here. I'm, I'm actually really saddened to hear that she's leaving. She's been really beautiful to work with. So thank you, Skylar. Um, and I think I'll just turn it over to the rest for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wanting to comment?
Hello, Chair and Board. Dana from Hayfork. I would like to echo Adrian's comments about thinking Skylar, um, is a real shame to see her go. Yeah. Um, as far as options, option four, it would be my marble. Um, I have spent a number of years speaking and asking questions at, in public forums, trying to neutralize the misinformation about the money and dollars of the, that our cannabis program have provided to the county and clarified misinformation about the cost that cannabis caught, the cost incurred on the county. But it's like flipped. Our program has provided money to the county and funded code enforcement, not cost the county money. I've heard multiple times that explained in the reverse. And I've done as good of a job as I could possibly do to try to correct that. One time at candidate Rick Loop-Wyler's public forum. Thank you for listening. Um, I hope that with this information and this hard work that many people put the effort into that spreadsheet, I hope it's clear now at how much money the program has brought into the county, how much money it will continue to bring into the, into the county. And I'm really excited, um, that my individual license will be issued soon. So I can start giving money back to the county with my licensing fees and then in the future my taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay Grossman, Chris, Hayfork, uh, afternoon. Uh, Chair members of the board. First of all, I would just like to say, I've been sitting in this from a state at this podium, I think since 2016 or 17. And, uh, although I don't agree with everything in that presentation, I will openly say that is hands down the most comprehensive presentation, document, facts, findings, assumptions, whatever you want to call it, that has ever, and I mean this, ever to date come out of the cannabis department. So it'll never be perfect. Nobody will ever be totally happy. Uh, I, I can, I, I just found out that evidently I'm one of the literal handful that pay the maximum tax on cannabis. It sucks. Um, thanks for, you know, for that. Uh, I, uh, I think it's, it, it's a great opportunity that we all got to learn so much about, uh, code enforcement budget, I mean, the cannabis budget. I think that there's a lot of room to grow anywhere, uh, in this program. But no matter how strong a fighter you put in a ring, if they're wearing a straitjacket, they're still going to get the hell beat out of them. From somebody that has been inside of this program for a long time, I think financially, get this program what it needs to let it continue building a viable economy in Trinity County. And I think as equally important to it is to take that straitjacket off. I think some of the biggest financial burdens on this program are, uh, the processes it's taking to run this program. A lot of other businesses with same environmental requirements, same CUPs, stuff like that, that are operated, uh, county-wise at a, 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 a fraction of a fraction of a fraction of the cost of a, of a sale, one acre grow with a CUP and a CEQA document. Um, that's not a conversation for today, but when everybody's looking at the budget and numbers, uh, just know that if anybody outside of government was putting together that process, it would cost a fraction of it. Somebody came to me and said, my resume piece is that I have put together the cannabis licensing program and the budget for it and stuff for Trinity County, the interview would end there. Um, I think that's probably common with, with most government programs, but this one exasperates that, that sentiment. Get this program what it needs. Uh, I think this presentation probably even suggested that illicit cannabis, uh, on a broad scale has pumped Trinity County's economy in a way that no other business sort of logging has here. Uh, so, but, but let's get back to business. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, Board. I'm Carl Wampler from Hayfork. And, uh, I think it was very ironic that we started this meeting off with the community economic development. And the way we could do that the best is to prop us up, uh, small farmers up, not put these fees on us. We've paid enough into the county that we're due. We need your help now. Don't put any of these fees on us. And we'll hopefully have an attempt to prosper, hire more employees and keep some of these other businesses afloat. So, you know, so thank you very much for your time. Please, uh, process four. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair Supervisors, Ryan Tarbell, Hayfork. Um, first off, I'd like to thank Drew and Rick and everybody else that put together all the supporting material. Um, I also agree that it was very unbiased. And it's really been a long road, so it's, it's good to look back. To look at all, all the money that's come into the department, money that's gone out of the department, um, and where it's went. I think today, uh, first and foremost, the most important thing, the cannabis, the cannabis department, uh, really needs this funding. There's still, you know, hundreds of businesses that had their feet, you know, pulled out, out from them, you know, about 18 months ago from the court order from the TAA lawsuit, um, still trying to get operational to this day. And any reduction in the budget of the cannabis department right at this point, would make these businesses suffer and, and many of them, you know, probably wouldn't get their license back this year. So first and foremost, um, you know, provide this funding. How you provide this funding, um, you know, I really strongly believe that the cannabis, um, program has contributed a lot to the county. Since its inception, you know, roughly $500,000 a year through code enforcement. Um, in general, a lot of fines that have come back into the general fund. I don't think it was really clearly stated today, but you know, code enforcement just isn't for unlicensed cannabis cultivation. It's for all county health and safety code violations. So the cannabis program has, has really contributed to the health and safety of the county, you know, on all fronts. Not just cannabis. And then those code enforcement fines coming back into the general fund have had great impacts. 1.1 million dollars of those fines went to the jail, it's bought vehicles, um, you know, the general plan to update. So I think the benefits are significant. The cannabis program, you know, has provided a lot of money to the general fund over the years. And, you know, I think it's important, uh, you know, for the county to see goodwill uh, for the program and, and contribute that money back today so that we can give money back to the county in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'd like to, um, add a few things from a, from the treasurer's perspective. While the cultivators, I a hundred percent agree, this program needs to be supported. I agree that they, they have had to literally jump through hoops. I understand all of that. I, I commiserate with them. I completely do. Also though, as a treasurer, we don't have that extra million dollars. And so the way I feel as a department head, whenever we are given, we, we're presented with that budget, we're given a budget and we need to work within that budget. So that's my first ask is that whenever, I'm with the exception of when something drastic happens. But with, I mean, we're over a million dollars for this. And so I would ask that they are, just like the rest of us, have to work within those, uh, what we're provided, what we're allotted. Um, the other part of that is, is, um, there are so many different general funds that are, we're, we're suffering. We don't have that. And so this, this money has to come from somewhere else. And so meanwhile, these general funds, we can't have the ask that we want, and they're much smaller. None of us are coming up with, hey, we need a million dollars. We can't get the things that we need because we, if you've got somebody, I mean, I'm sorry, but if, if, if to stay within those means, you have to stay within what you're, what you're given. You can't just keep moving forward. And when you realize that you have a problem, you have a leak, you have a hole, you need to do something to stop that and not continually hiring and doing all these extra things that are making that, putting us that much further into, um, the hole. So just thought I would share. So, and so I would ask that you not choose number four, because I do not think that's in the benefit of everyone. Um, the other piece of that is, I also think that this is supporting just one industry. And while the cannabis, um, they do need that assistance, there's other. And while the cannabis, um, they do need that assistance, there's other, you know, we've got fishermen and ranchers and teachers, and there's a lot of other industries that were also hit. And so depending on where those funds come from, um, this is not the only industry that is suffering. So that's sure.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Okay, close the room and, uh, anyone on Zoom? All right.
Tyler Thompson.
Uh, hi. Good afternoon, um, chairman and members of the board. I would just like to ask that you provide the funding that is needed to, to have the functioning cannabis department, have a functioning form of government. For somebody who has written checks to this program since 2016 and hopes to continue in the future. I really believe that it's, it's necessary to, to continue forward in a rather expedited, uh, form at the moment. So if one way or another, it's up to you obviously to choose which form of funding you provide, but I would just first and foremost ask to provide the funding in some way, shape or form. If you should choose an option to
What did I say?
Sorry, there were several people.
Tyler, did you want to continue? I think we're under control now.
Tyler.
Did we mute you?
Oh yeah. Now I'm, now I'm unmuted.
Okay, she, she paused your time, so you're good.
Okay. Um, so yeah, my, my, I guess first and foremost ask is to just fund the department. So we have a functioning form of government, um, one way, shape or form. I understand with budgetary requirements, uh, departments do have to make do with what they are allocated. So I don't know what the previous allocations were. But to defund something to a point where it's not functioning is effectively just not having a government. So I would, for first and foremost, ask to fund, fund the department in some way, shape or form. If you should choose to loan the money, um, so to speak, uh, I don't know if it's directly called that, but, um, I would, I guess, ask for the discussion to go towards, um, having the funds be completely separate from this moment forward, uh, for cannabis. To have that money be repaid in time, but then to no longer co-mingle and cross general cannabis funds into general funds, um, to have it be its own separate standalone functioning, uh, department, moving forward and the benefits from having the program would then unfortunately not be able to, to go back into the county's general fund. Um, I would prefer to see some goodwill and have the county fund when needed and then hopefully reap the benefits of that funding, um, through taxes and license fees later on. But one way, shape or form, please fund it and consider if you do separate it now to keep it separated going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Hill.
Hello. Good afternoon, board. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, hello.
Hello, welcome to the new board members. Uh, my name is Jennifer Hill from Douglas City. I'm the owner and operator of Live Family Farm with Farms in Hayfork and Wildwood. Want to take this moment of your time to comment on this agenda item. Uh, I appreciate Director Plavani's thorough presentation, very in-depth analysis of the cannabis department's financials as well as the many pitfalls this program has been through, uh, regarding the TCA lawsuit, TCAA lawsuit and, uh, the hall of licensing, as well as just the constant turnover of directors within the department. It's been quite the ever-changing history, uh, with new compliance measures being thrown at farmers every year. TAA lawsuit, I apologize. I appreciate Supervisor Gogan pointing out that the cannabis program fees do in fact contribute majorly to the general fund over the years. So maybe it's time to give back to a program that has been so greatly contributing to our community. As, uh, Mr. Tarbell pointed out, all the wonderful things that have come from it. Um, at this time, approving the increase in budget is your best investment for this county's future. Let's try to license all these people in the queue. Some have been in for years. And then you'll create even more tax revenue, um, not to mention property tax revenue. Right now, the cannabis market is taking an upswing. Uh, we're on an uptick. And in the next couple of years, things are going to get better and better. And you're going to want to have put this time and energy into these finances, upholding, maintaining, and if even at this point, growing the cannabis department. The staff is doing a wonderful job and it's really echoing through. You can get a hold of people in a timely manner, which has never happened before. So I just want to say kudos to the staff. I really appreciate you and your enthusiasm. And at this point, you know, you shouldn't even think of raises within the department to keep these individuals who are working so hard and clearly care so much about this program's success. At the very least, please don't take this money that you're allotting to the cannabis department and go and label it funds for enforcement at a later time. No more funds for enforcement. Let's focus on growing the program. We want to have, we want to have it. We want it so badly to flourish. Please approve this funding. We greatly need your help in this pivotal time. You're in a unique position where you can help us. Let's not be Mendocino here and have eight licenses. They're clearly on an upswing. I urge you to choose alternative four, contribute these funds without requirement to be repaid. It's up to you to approve this, the board. You see the projections here. You see where a flourishing and up to capacity program could take us. Please invest in my family's future as well as every other business in this county since logging shut down and it's extremely hard to thrive here. Again, I want to thank you for your time and a happy spring.
Thank you. Keith Groves.
I got two texts. Great job.
You did what?
I got two texts from friends. Great job.
Right. Uh, good job. Uh, this is Keith Groves, uh, East Fork. Drew, uh, one, one thing that you missed is the added sales tax on top of the cannabis tax. And we know, so that's a, a small number, but it still is a valuable number. And I, I think there's one issue here that, uh, I know we focused on rep. But the, there's an upcoming, uh, review and revision of the ordinance where in my estimations, we could easily cut $200,000 or $300,000 a year out of, of, uh, how we do this process, by streamlining this process, by giving multi-year licenses. And the other huge benefit that for the success of this program that needs to happen is that stacking becomes part of that ordinance. Because, uh, you're probably not going to have 530 independent, uh, businesses to get to that number. So, uh, with this revitalization that you're trying to put back into the program, I think it's highly important that the ordinance revision take higher priority that seems to. Doesn't seem like it's going to meet its initial, uh, time date of having an ordinance by June 1st. Uh, maybe it will. Uh, but I would also recommend whatever form that you choose is to fund this program to move forward, uh, because there has been economic studies done before. Uh, and, you know, probably easily a hundred million dollars worth of economic revenue into the county on a historical basis. So with that, thank you for your time, Drew. Good job. Uh, Skylar, we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve L.
Hi, this is Steve Lyon from Junction City. I'm going to encourage the board to choose option four. I think this, uh, cannabis program, cannabis cultivators and the cannabis program has been a cash cow for the county, has been looked at as a cash cow for the county and has been milked pretty thoroughly. Uh, I know I've put in over $40,000 personally over since 2017. I think that the program has been a net positive financially every year, except for this year when we're all suffering under the ridiculous lawsuit by the TAA that was handled poorly all the way around. Uh, so there's one year that revenues are falling short. I think the county should prop up the program during this shortfall, get the program returning to positive finances, choose option four and support the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Avila.
Hello, this is Carla Avila from Hyam Palm. Uh, thank you so much for bringing this forward. I just also want to thank, uh, the staff and Supervisor Lutwiler for, for all the committee for their great work on all of this background. Uh, I think it, it, it's just testament to the fact that, uh, the program is viable, that it can hold itself up. Uh, we, probably the easiest thing to do would be to build a time machine, go back in time, not take the money out in the first place, and then it would be there. But obviously, you know, we don't have time for that. So, um, I'm hoping alternative four is viable because I don't know why it would be an alternative if it's not a viable alternative. I think it should come from the general fund, not as a loan, just as money that needs to be put somewhere. I understand that departments have to work within their budgets. Again, building a time machine would make perfect sense because then we could go back and have never used it as a, as a bank in the first place. But this bank, you know, we, we can't put a run on our bank. We got to put the money back in the bank. And then the bank will be there for the future. I think we just learned this lesson in, in Silicon Valley recently. You know, this, if we're going to look at this as a, as a revenue source, then it's got, it, it needs its budget. If the budget needs a million more dollars to function, then that's the actual correct budget in the future. Like any other year besides this year, it probably wouldn't be an issue and it would probably be there. I don't think that we need to base this on whether we're having conservative or, or not conservative opinions on, on how much tax revenue will come in or will not come in in the future. There's, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but it is totally true that if our hands aren't tied behind our back, there's room to grow. And I don't think that any of our businesses have hit their max. We certainly would love to be operating again and paying fees and taxes. I just think we need to look at this as pragmatically as possible. If another department was falling short on their budget for their department, and there was some good reason they needed the money out of the general fund, would we be saying, well, prove to us you deserve it. Well, or else you're not creating benefit for the rest of the county. I just, I just think that's an unfair way to look at this. We can't keep separating cannabis into its own special category that has its own special set of circumstances and gets shaken down for more because we think that we deserve to treat these people this way. Let's, let's try and go back in time and pretend we didn't make the mistakes we made before and just start here with not making those mistakes into the future. So fund the program, preferably not with a loan, because once it's functioning, get the budget back on track. We get all the rest of it back on track. We don't have this problem in the future. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Veronica.
Good afternoon, Veronica Kelly Albies, Douglas City. I want to start by saying commending, uh, Director Plavani and staff and, uh, Suzie for all of the hard work that went into this breakdown. I had the opportunity to kind of take a, a, a quick look as I could. I wanted to delve a little deeper, uh, time permitting, of course. But I think Terry McBrayer is on point with her assessment. Do we have this money that we could move to another division? I think they do need help and we do want to keep this program moving forward. I think these numbers are a bit bloated for projected revenues. And in terms of, of the general plan and the monies that have come into general fund, everybody in Trinity County was promised some deliverables on how this was going to work. The cannabis industry as a whole is the one that benefits most from the update of the general plan. And we appreciate that support, that we can have that and create, um, a plan that will support the industry within Trinity County. In terms of, of other general fund money coming in, I, I'm looking at the numbers, you know, and 2021, they were pretty healthy. And of course they've gone down a bit, but to be projected for $20,000 on tax revenue to general fund, it's concerning. And I understand the hits that the industry has taken and I commend the board for giving them, um, for finding ways to help them be more sustainable. My recommendation would be that option one to transfer the, uh, the cannabis building assets. My question on that would be, then would they start paying rent again like they did at their old location? How would that work? Does that also benefit the, uh, general fund and overall all residents of Trinity County? And then have them have a repayment plan over the next five years. You want to make it, you want to support them, but make it doable. Because what other programs with, within Trinity County would have to be cut in order to move this money over? Your treasurer stood before you and said, we don't have the money. You know, but there's always a way to find something that will work. And I encourage you to do that. I think option one is the best that's being presented today. But if there are other options, I think you need to support the program. But you have to remember that the, the residents, the whole of Trinity County works with that general fund and the services that you provide and all the departments within Trinity County who, um, put in their, their efforts as well to support everybody in Trinity County. So there's some weird numbers on here for me, but I know Suzie's on top of it all. The revised budget amounts, there were some things like communications. Your today does a little higher than the budget they're requesting. I don't know if that is just something I'm looking at. But yeah, do we have the money? We need to find a creative way to support them, but option one would be my recommendation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Daryl Davis.
Hi there. This is Daryl Davis from Junction City. Um, I think this might be a case of, uh, following the money. They always say if you want to find the truth, follow the money. And as Drew has just pointed out, the money was there in the past. The money's definitely going to be in our future. It also might be a case of not biting the hand that feeds you. Like we know there's money in the general fund because we put it there. So as a farmer, I would assume that this would, like, accepting option four would be just automatic. Like the fact that we can even debate about this right now is great, but I think it's truly, it, we know there's money there. So to try to pretend like this program, oh, it could just fold, you know, no problem. No, it can't fold. This has to go forward. Almost any county programs, most county programs aren't equipped with making the kind of money that this is. So, um, I do agree with Carla. Um, and the last speaker mentioned that there is no money there. Like I just said, uh, I think we just need to do the right thing here. $900,000 really isn't that kind of big capital concerning what we're really working, uh, with. Uh, so can I really get an automatic on the, the number four? And not kind of slight this program any further? Thank you.
Jeff. Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Godela Zenia. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I'm for alternative four. I don't think this money should be a loan. I think the program's been used as a plug to fill all those leaky holes in the county for too long. The money's been horribly mismanaged. The program has been horribly mismanaged up to a point. And now we're at a point where the cannabis department is functioning and functioning well. And I, and I can only guess is going to function even better in the future because the staff has some stability. The staff are doing a great job now. We've gotten rid of the problems out of, out of, you know, from the, the missteps from, uh, from earlier, uh, last year of terrible hiring of a, of a, of a cannabis director who, uh, wanted to not run a program. Steps, missteps like that, missteps with the TAA lawsuit have really hurt the program and got us to this position where we're needing some assistance from the general fund. In the past, it's been the cannabis Um, in the past, it's been the cannabis department who's helping out the general fund when it needs it. And a little bit too much, and and I'm sure some of those things weren't legal. Um, still see, I haven't seen a cannabis fee study. Um, I've been in the program since the very beginning. I've been speaking at the planning commission meeting since the beginning. Um, I'm license number nine. Um, I've 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 watched this all happen, and this is the first time I can say we have a department. That actually functions well. The people are learning their jobs. They're getting better at it. They're doing a good job right now as it is. Um, and they need to be supported. These are people that came here to get this job and work in this industry. And it's they're just one part of the whole ecosystem that that is that is cannabis in Trinity County. And they need to be supported. It should not be alone. Um, the cannabis department has already given up too much over the years. And and it's time for this new board to show some support for it. So that, you know, as a larger part of. The economy in Trinity County, it can it can be stabilized and start contributing um, as it has in the past. Um, thanks, that's all I got.
Thank you. Catherine.
Uh, Catherine Sidman Lewiston. Um, I, first of all, I just want to say how impressed I am. Every member of um, Trinity County staff that's spoken today about this item and as well as the other items on the agenda. Have been so impressive and are so dedicated and I'm really thankful that. We're able to attract and maintain that level of staff. Um, it's really impressive. Over the last years of the program, it's been kind of a mad scramble to get it implemented. And then lots of response to the nuisance lawsuits. And NIMBYism and activism that we've seen um, have terrible effects. On um, our county coffers. So T A A is to thank for all of this. Um, and let's not forget that, that um. Like the county, the farmers have become victims of this um. Short-minded nuisance lawsuits that have taken place. And we're finally able to come out of that. And what I would ask is that. A lot like uh, Carla said, we start today. We start today with optimism about the market. We start today with optimism about this industry. And we know that this industry is the closest thing that we have to economic development in any other. This is. We're we're right there on the precipice of something that could really benefit multiple. Um, aspects of life in Trinity County in a very positive way. And we have to do that with a stable program. This isn't a green rush. This isn't an economic bubble. This is a program that's now a permanent department of the county and needs to be treated like any other department. Um, our our treasurer didn't say we didn't have the money. Our treasurer said it wasn't in your budget, so you shouldn't be able to have it until next year. That's a paperwork issue. The reason that the budget wasn't accurate. Um, is because of all of the reasons that um, Director Povani said so well and and that presentation was just excellent. So clearly, um, there needs to be an investment from the county. Um, option four is the way to go. There shouldn't be a loan. There's no other situation that that I know of, and I'm happy to be corrected where. Departments are looking for loans from the county just to maintain operational. Um. It, I I don't think we should be treating cannabis so differently. From the other departments that we have. It really reflects um, a close-minded. Um. Just a bigoted view that I think is not attractive for anyone to maintain moving forward. So it's twenty twenty three. Let's start this year with some optimism. And an investment in the closest thing we have to significant economic drivers in the county right now.
Thank you. Chris Williams.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Chris Williams from Weaverville. First, excellent job on presenting this item. I know a lot of work uh, went into it and I really, really appreciate it. The funding request should be a contribution from the county. The program stimulates our economy in a desperately needed way. And this funding gives it a boost that is sorely needed. Regarding not having the money, could we consider using the four point eight million dollars in PILT funds as I think they're unrestricted? I could be wrong on that. We finally have some sound leadership in the cannabis division and a robust staff. And if you're serious about economic development, then please vote to contribute. To the stability of this department and this program and this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no other raised hands, no shouts.
Good day supervisors and staff, and I too want to thank everybody that had a hand in uh, putting together this uh. The budget document and doing that research and forecasting. It's. It's uh, it's obviously the best job that's ever been attempted. You know, on this in the county. A couple of things that um. That I think should be taken into consideration here is that the cannabis program has contributed mightily to the county since its inception. And um, I have a few examples that haven't been cited yet. Um, one is the uh, the first year of big code enforcement fines. There was a B O S meeting. Where at that meeting, it was uh, shared that there was uh. About one point one million dollars in code enforcement fines collected and put into the general fund. At the very next meeting, uh, Director Tippett um, requested one point one million dollars to for an emergency. Uh, backfill to the jail program before the county lost their matching funds. Two years ago. Uh, there was a meeting where it was shared that the first round of cannabis tax. Uh, that came into the county was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. At the following meeting, uh, Sheriff Saxon came before you and uh, uh, requested about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to. Uh, for an emergency position to be allocated for uh, admin staff. Because his existing staff was literally stretched to the breaking point. The there's some, there's plenty of other small examples like that, and. This is an opportunity to do the right thing. Cannabis has contributed. And contributed mightily. Most years, all except one. And through no fault of their own, these applicants continue to pay, pay, pay. And should receive some credit for this contribution to the county generally. The 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 statement of overriding considerations. In the programmatic E I R for our cannabis program. Uh, cites that one of the overriding considerations i- is that it stabilizes property values in Trinity County. A healthy cannabis program. Uh, another is that it would create. Nine hundred and forty-five new permanent jobs in Trinity County. I can't think of a single other industry. No matter how big we think recreation might be someday, that might contribute nine hundred and forty-five new permanent jobs here? So. The next two agenda items are the county board of supervisors possibly waiving the fees. For the Trinity Trail Alliance and the Lewiston Sparkies. It's a contribution to a greater good for the entire county. All the citizens of Trinity County. I'm in support of that contribution too. This is an opportunity to do the right thing. And option number four before you. Lets the cannabis division retain their own building that they had to pay for. Before they could staff up. They had to come up with four hundred grand to pay for that building cash. They should keep the building. And I encourage you to choose option number four. Continue trying to do the right thing here, please.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I have no other raised hands, no shouts. Okay, with that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board.
I have a couple of clarifications to do. Um, Suzie, I think I'll need you for most of this. Um, so I just want to clarify my understanding on something, see if I'm in the right part. So uh, one on the building issue that was mentioned. Uh, I gather some. Buildings that are uh. I'll say in general county property are owned by departments or divisions and some are owned by the county. Do we have a clear guidance on? How that is supposed to happen or is it variable?
Um, this is the first building that has been purchased since my employment in Trinity County. Um, most of the buildings. Other than the ones that are general purpose and house multiple departments or provide like the parks provide public. Access, I believe are owned and shown on the departmental. Um, department's fixed assets listing. Those that the um, the courthouse. The parks, um, the fairgrounds, those those are owned and shown on general services fixed asset list and owned by the county as a whole. Now, with that being said. Anything that's owned by a specific department is owned by the county as a whole. It just determines where that funding source for the purchase of that. Property, that asset came from. And where any proceeds would go to if that asset were to be disposed of or sold. Um. I can relate it back more easily to vehicles because that's what we purchase more of within the county. And typically, the departments purchase their own vehicles. And then when those vehicles are. No longer useful for their department and they sell them. That any proceeds from the sale of that that vehicle go back into their departmental funds. Um, unless they go through the motor pool and then there's a separate process for that.
Okay, and so costs of. I'll say owning that building, insurance, anything else that has to do with improvements, all that kind of stuff right now would be with the cannabis division. If it was purchased back through this transfer uh, by the county, then the county would. Own those responsibilities. Is that accurate?
No, that wouldn't be accurate. Um, so it would still be occupied by the cannabis department. So we, there would have to be. A rental agreement put in place in order to um, cover those costs uh, and and compensate the county back for those.
Well, I'm getting there, but I'm just saying it would start with the county owning that and then charging users of the building. Both for rent and their portion of insurance and everything else.
Correct. That would function the same as it does for every other county building regardless of. Whose departmental fixed asset it list it falls on.
Right.
They're all encompassed under our general county insurance policies and then those policy premiums are spread out to. The various departments based on. Depending on the type of insurance, there's different allocation bases that are used. So as far as property. Um. I believe it's spread based on square footage.
And today, the cannabis division receives a small amount of money uh, because planning has some of the space. Is that correct?
Correct. Planning, the planning department pays rent to the cannabis division for the space that they occupy in that building.
So if the county took that over through this transfer, then uh, both planning and cannabis would pay into the county.
Likely since planning is a general fund department, we would have planning purchase the asset and own it. And so then cannabis would play. Pay rent to planning instead of planning paying rent to cannabis.
Okay, uh, and now over onto the uh, contribution or advance to be repaid. So my understanding is if it is a contribution, then it's um. I don't know, a little a little bit like a subsidy. It just says, here's the money. This does not then get calculated in your cost of doing business. Whereas if it's a transfer paid back over in this example after one, five years. Um. Well, in this sample, that'd be about a hundred thousand a year would be being paid back and that would then be included in the fee calculations. Going forward. So that that's the difference that would happen for on the other side that we've been hearing from cultivators is. If you if you just give that money, then we don't bear the burden of it in our ongoing cost of permit fees. If you transfer it, then we do.
Correct.
And then the other side of that is uh, if it's transferred, then the general fund with it with an advance, then the general fund gets it back over time. Um, and can be used for any sort of program or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, and then is it, I think I see here on the slide that we didn't actually cover, I mean, we covered the slide, but not that's that bottom point is. This says that the funds would come out of the four point eight million. Because that's really the only place we have funds sitting around, right?
That is correct. That is the only funding stream at this point in time that we have that has the amount that they're asking for. Our contingency only has five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in it. Um, and we don't have additional excess general funds to recognize for this fiscal year. So if we were not to take them from our local. Agency tribal consistency funds, then we would have to go through and cut. General fund contributions to other departments to find that difference.
Right.
And what is the amount in our general fund as of today? Do you happen to know a ballpark on that?
I mean, a contingency?
What do you mean in our general fund?
Well. I just, and maybe that was a poor way to ask it. And there there have been a lot of public comments that there must be plenty of money in our general fund. Because we've watched money go into it, therefore it must be there. And so to take it out must be an easy thing to just go get it and and just use that. So can you speak to that a little bit?
So I I don't know what our current cash balance in our general fund is. I haven't ran that. Um, what I can tell you is we budget. Every dollar of general fund that we have every given in every in any given budget year. So in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, every. Dollar that we had in anticipated revenue plus anything that was remaining as carryover from last year. Was used to balance the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Um, and that includes the five hundred and. Thirty thousand dollar contingency that we currently have. So there are no excess funds sitting in our general fund. That could be used to take that to cover this cost. Um.
What would it mean if the board were to say, okay, we're going to take this amount, nine hundred seventy-one thousand, out of the general fund? As a blanket statement, what does that mean on a spreadsheet or in your? As you go to work the magic, what what does that mean?
That means Suzie pulls out all of her hair and someone cries. Because that means we have five, so we can cover five hundred and thirty of it with contingency. And the remaining would have to be cut from other general fund contributions to departments about budgets that have already been balanced. Um, so we would have to go through every single county departmental budget. And see what was their general fund contribution. How much have they already used? Because we can't take that back from them. And see what was left to cut from them for the last quarter of the fiscal year and what would that do to their services? Um. It likely, it would mean shutting down services and. Staff layoffs or furloughs for the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, it 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 would not be a fun or pretty task.
And thus the option of coming out of the four point eight million.
Thus, uh, my recommendation being that that is the only place that whatever portion of funds you choose to provide to them. Be come from that funding source regardless of whether you provide it to them as an advance. Or as a direct contribution. Um, regardless of whether we choose to buy the building back from them and provide a advance or contribution for the difference. All of those dollars, the full nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two. Has to come from our local area tribal consistency fund. Because that is the only funding source that we have without decimating our contingency, which then leaves every other county department. In hardship throughout for the rest of the fiscal year because we don't know what additional unforeseen things are going to come up.
And so out of that, we've received the four point eight. We had hoped that we would get a second payment of four point eight. We don't know. If that's going to show up, right, until it does or doesn't.
Everything I read has indicated that we will get it in fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay.
Um, that being federal fiscal year twenty-three, so. I don't know. I did just receive an email. I have to do my first reporting on this first four point eight that we've received.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming that that first reporting will be part of the trigger for allocation of the second. Um, installment.
And then can we just review things that we already know are going to have to be covered in some fashion? Um, not even touching on requests that have been made. But we know that Canyon Creek is going to cost us a million dollars. Um, what other things can we talk about that are? Out there as have-tos?
I don't know if um, Panos is really good about talking to you guys, but I'm not sure if other um, the community is aware of that, but. Due to the new air restrictions that they have, he's limited on what he can, how long he can operate a piece of equipment. And so what they're having to do, this is for snowplows because everybody's so upset because their roads aren't plowed. Well, he's has limited. Well, he has limited amount of time he can use for that equipment. And when he, that equipment's done, then he then has to rent equipment from somewhere. And when they reach that threshold, it has a counter on there, they're done. And so that's one thing. We need, we need a roof on the courthouse. I can't even get the the software for equipment, you know, for for equipment for the cannabis. I wasn't even granted that. We are told status quo and that was just my whole point and it was because that's. And I think there's a precedent if we, with this money, that the part of the restrictions, if you read what they say, what the allowable uses are for that funds. It is for hard hit industries that were in that time, but that's not the only industry that was hit. Cannabis was hit, but you have a lot of other industries as well. So that's just something to be fully aware of.
And Liz or Suzie, I don't know which one of you could answer this better. And I know it's on the spot, you'll have to do ballpark. But we also talked about supporting this division, which I believe we should. But there are a lot of other departments and divisions that have approved positions that aren't funded. Including, you know, we mentioned earlier when we were praising Skylar and wishing she wasn't leaving and in my heart, I, I believe that part of the reason. That she's leaving is because that department has, was defunded in part to balance the budget this year. And, and so therefore we left a few people trying to do the job of many without the support they needed. And I'm sure that story gets told over and over again. So I'm just wondering, how many approved positions do we have? Again, ballpark, that are unfunded because we can't afford it.
I don't know that we could provide that level of detail on the spot. There are several. But I want to provide two different answers. When we have done a survey to department heads about needs. You know, our responses collected a total roughly about twelve point eight million dollar in identified need for the county. Which Terry was speaking to. The second part, when we're talking about staffing, you know, I. I would be remiss to ever recommend the board using one time fund to pay for ongoing costs, which staffing is. And so, you know, Suzie and I have had several conversations about that that would. In my opinion, not be wisdom to spend money in that fashion. And that twelve point eight million does not include the twenty five percent of emergency. Costs to natural disaster that we are responsible for. Best case scenario that we have CDA or FEMA reimbursement to said emergencies. So, you know, there are, there are many costs in the county. Of that twelve point eight, I would say. There are a lot of costs that DOT could benefit from and equipment. I mean, it is quite a comprehensive list. I hope that that just provides some information on where we sit. And I know staff work very hard to balance the budget every year, given all these needs.
I think you referenced in a previous meeting that we started at a six million dollar. Problem when you were balancing the budget last year.
I feel like this last year was six and the year before was four, but I might be wrong. It's correct.
Yeah, we were about six million dollars out. The, the general fund asks to start fiscal year twenty three, twenty. Sorry, twenty two, twenty three, already jumping into budget development. Came in about six million dollars over our projected general fund revenues.
And I wonder if it's, it's probably easy for you. Can you just quickly? Give us a list of the departments that are general fund departments. Is that easy?
It might not be all inclusive. I'm going to forget one or two.
Sure.
We've got, your general fund departments include board of supervisors, admin. Assessor, auditor, clerk recorder. Treasure tax collector, general services, building, planning, environmental health. The sheriff's office, jail, jail health. District attorney, thank you. HR, public defender, risk management. Animal control. Search and rescue.
Probation.
Probation. I know I'm forgetting a handful of them.
You did well.
Cooperative extension, library. I think I got that.
I think, I think that might be it. Okay, you did well. Thank you. Stress I'm having is in addition to. Emergency, you know, the twenty five percent that's our responsibility for emergency, things like Canyon Creek. And not knowing what other emergencies, I mean, we wouldn't have guessed that the Canyon Creek slide was going to happen and be as extensive as it is. And then that isn't even beginning to talk about other emergencies that you're looking at and dealing with. And the one that just weighs heavily on my heart is the planning department. Because I don't understand how we're going to ever have any kind of. I'm sorry. Oh, I can't talk too much without a motion on the table. Well, let's throw a motion on the table then. Anybody want to make a motion?
I just have a couple of questions.
Um, let's, let's take a five minute break. Yes, one, one nineteen. There is.
Probably. Probably so. I just make a motion just to get things going.
Okay, it is one twenty and we are. Back at it.
Yeah, and open it up. That's a good answer.
Personal concern.
At our five minutes, I don't remember.
We're past it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're two minutes over.
Okay, we are two minutes past, my apologies. And we are at the point where. I'm going to ask if there is a board member who would care to put a motion on the table.
And I think when we broke supervisor Carpenter, I said she still had a couple of questions if that was.
Oh, I'm sorry, prior to the, oh, my, my.
I do. Okay, so I, I pulled up the, the, the list of, of utilization opportunities for this. Local assistance and tribal contingency funds, and I'm assuming that. That the assumption would be that it would go in the. Let me find it.
Like the category that would allow it to be.
Yeah, yeah, long term economic, well, no, that's not. Provision of health services, education services, court service, policy, fire, emergency, medical and other public. Safety services, utilities, sanitation, I'm just trying to read through economic development, general government operations, I guess is the one. So with that, with that being said, I, I have a question to. I guess the, the reason this money came to the county, my assumption is that it says tribal contingency fund. So with, with that being in the title, I have a curiosity to know whether or not. When we spend these funds or look for ways to spend these funds. Although Trinity County has no federally recognized tribes, we do have some state and locally recognized tribes. Do we consult with any of those tribal leaders in the expenditure of these funds? Do we? Do we know? Okay. And then. That's just was a curiosity. And then secondly, as brought up by the UC extension. Fellow this morning, when Rick Supervisor Letweiler asked him if there was any way that his. Organization could help support economic development. He said he had to check because most of, a good percentage of their funding comes from the federal government. And there may be a conflict in the utilization of those federal funds. In, in a cannabis related. Development. So these funds are also federal funds. And so I'm just curious to know if there would be some type of a conflict. Because these are federal funds, if they were utilized for the cannabis division, that may be for county council to help me understand that. And with that said, I also have some. I personally feel as we were given information today, both from the auditor and from. Our, our taxes and everyone, we looked at the departments that were in the general fund. I feel like in order to make an informed decision. I need to know more about how this decision would impact all of the other departments as a whole. So I don't, I don't know if I hold in front of me strong enough information to be able to really make a choice today. Is there, can you answer the, the federal funding question or is that for later?
No, I would, I would love to answer that. I, I was not giving a heads up that that was the plan, but, but.
I was just.
But it's a great question and it triggered my thought. So if you would mind giving me a moment to research it. My understanding from the guidance we were given and in consultation with Suzie is that. The guidance we're given is that there's no restrictions on the use of funds and they can be used in the same method as Pilt money can. And we have confirmed that Pilt money can be used on programs such as cannabis programs. But I would like to double check it. So if you wouldn't mind giving me a moment, I'll do a little research on that.
Perfect, yeah.
While you're doing that, just to kind of brief history for myself. When the cannabis department bought the planning building on Main Street there. I thought that there was going to be at least two or three other renters in there. I think that's the way. Richard sold it to us was that. The cannabis department would buy it, then the planning commission or the planning department would pay certain amount. And maybe one or two other departments would pay into that. To that fee. What does the planning department pay the cannabis? Department now? Am, am I incorrect? When I thought that there was supposed to be maybe one or two other departments in that building when we purchased it?
When we originally purchased the building, my recollection is that it was for planning and cannabis. Those were the departments that were going to move down there. Planning was going to pay rent to cannabis. And the reason being is because there was no cannabis needed to expand. And there was no space for them to expand in the current. Building that they were occupying renting from building and planning up on Airport Road. The current budget for rent from planning to cannabis is roughly fifty five, fifty six hundred dollars a year.
A year? It seems cheap.
Because it's rent based on cost, because we're a count, as a county department and a county agency, we're not able to make money. We only recover our costs for the space. If I, I believe that planning also pays a portion of the utility bills. For the building because they occupy that space as well. But I don't handle their individual day to day finances, so I can't say that with a hundred percent certainty. And if, if the building were to transfer from the cannabis department then. And it didn't transfer to a general fund department for whatever reason, then both departments would pay rent.
And are there special logistics of if option one was chose, chosen or whichever one involved the exchange of the asset? Logistics associated with that transfer of the asset that we need to think about?
Yes, there are. I'll defer to Margaret on the, if there's any more specific. Yes, there are. I'll defer to Margaret on the, if there's any more specifics, but, um, I put an approximate number in there because, we would need to figure out the fair market value of the asset and not transfer just the asset at our book, current book value.
She summarized it well. There are processes for, um, public property and the exchange of it, uh, they're different if we're selling it to the public, if we're transferring internally, but we would have to follow those processes, and one of them is getting an appraisal to determine the fair market value at the time of sale versus the time of purchase, so we would have to do that. Um, and I do have an answer to Supervisor Carpenter Harris as well. I was able to look at the restricted uses on these funds, and there is only one restricted use as designated by the federal government, and that is this money cannot be used for lobbying, any lobbying purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, and Margaret, while you're editing there, because you referenced, um, something about that, trying to streamline processes, you're right, I know is, uh, not what we usually think about, or we try to, but it's not usually the outcome. Uh, rather than getting caught up in some process that might take weeks and months to evaluate the pro, the value of a building and so forth, if the decision was, involved the building transfer, could we make it that it was all shifted over as funding, but the plan is, once the building value is assessed, it will be transferred and then the balance will be adjusted, and so we do that without it holding us up, is that, yes?
Yes, that can be contemplated in the motion.
Okay. It's, it's just a more laborious process to do the transfer, but it doesn't slow us down necessarily. Okay, thank you.
And if we did that, and there needed to be this appraisal to find the fair market value of those assets, there's a cost involved with that, and so do we have a ballpark of what that might be?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do we, what do we pay for the building, Susie?
Three hundred?
Three fifty. And then improvements.
The purchase price of the building was three hundred thousand plus closing costs, and then we have to add on top of that the, um, remodel costs.
Four fifty?
I, I believe it's roughly around there. I think we had a five hundred thousand dollar budget total for purchase and all of the remodels, and I think we were in that four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range. Um, I didn't have a chance to look that number up and, um, pull the exact dollar amount for you. I'd hoped to this morning, but, um.
So that happened, it was a half a million dollars. That came out of the cannabis budget?
Yes, cannabis department purchased the building, they paid for all of the remodels. Their building, and that's why they get to charge rent to any non-cannabis division that works out of their building.
Okay, just want to just seem, it just seems to me, and I understand the government can't make money on, on the rent and all, it just seems to me that five thousand dollars a month to the other department, it's going to be forever until they get paid back to, to make that hole, it would seem like it'd be what, twenty some, twenty-five years? Yeah, that's assuming just half, and cannabis absorbs the other half. Seems like a large burden for the cannabis department to pay upfront for that, to get paid back in such a small incremental way, although I know it's what you have to do governmentally. You know, that's a cannabis budget, quite a bit. And repays very little, you know, annually, um, just, just something I was thinking about.
And if we were to choose an option that included the transfer of the building, where does, like, technically, where does that money come out that you make that transfer from? Where, where are you going to take the four hundred and fifty thousand?
Still going to come from the tribal, the local agency and tribal consistency funds. The full total sum of the nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars is going to come from the local, um, agency and tribal consistency funds, it's just how do we account for it? Do we, do we, as general fund county, um, get an asset in exchange for a portion of that amount?
Mm-hmm.
If we're rounding up and using a million instead of nine seventy-one, if, if it's treated as an advance to be repaid, then if it's all just done as an advance, then that's a million dollars that has to be repaid over whatever the time period is, versus if it's the building and advanced, then it's about half that that has to be repaid.
Correct.
Um, and then, of course, the option that we heard a lot from people today was, um, but if it's just a contribution, then of course they don't have to repay anything, and they get to hold on to the building, and they get to make a tiny bit of money off of the planning department, um, things like that. Is that fair?
Correct, yes.
Thanks.
Understood.
Understood. Anybody want to put a motion on the table?
When are we expecting the second half of our, um, tribal fund? Is there any set date perhaps?
Susie spoke earlier to, um, federal fiscal year twenty-three, but no, there's not a firm known date.
Is there any information that any of the tribes have any, uh, requests or utilization for these funds?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Not here.
So I'll just throw this out there for food for thought. At four point eight million twice, you got almost ten million dollars, we'll say. Cannabis department is looking for about ten percent of that, which still leaves ninety percent of that figure to be used throughout the county for all the other things that, that we talked about, which are very important things, um, for this county.
We need a motion.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to, to use the, what do they call it there, the, uh, local agency tribal consistency funds, ten percent out of the, I would say twenty percent out of the initial, uh, four point eight million, which would give them their nine hundred thousand dollars upfront, and, um, if there is a way, bookkeeping wise, to spread that out, ten percent, ten percent, I'm not sure how you, how you do that, so I would make the motion to take twenty percent approximately nine hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars and some change out of the, uh, local agency tribal consistency fund, which would basically be about twenty percent of that fund, and we would still have eighty percent of that fund left for the rest of the county to, uh, move forward and do the things they need to do with that money.
And Liam, are you suggesting this option four, or where it's just given?
Yes.
Okay, wanted to make sure I understood.
We have a motion on the table, is there a second?
Oh, second up for discussion.
Part of our, part of our agenda item is to authorize the C O and the auditor to sign the budget adjustment to make all of the necessary requests, is that included in your motion?
Sure.
And your second, thank you.
Yes. Um, well, uh, so in, in terms of discussion, I, I mean, I think we've heard a lot of opinions and a lot of facts along the way to help us shape our, our views on this. Uh, you could certainly, uh, come up with a, a justification to say if somewhere in the three to five million dollars has been contributed in some fashion to general fund over the program's life, couldn't a fat, a million of it be given back? I think that's kind of what we were hearing, and, and I can understand where people come from. The trade-off to that is uh, that million dollars is obviously desperately needed when we had to cut six million dollars out of what people said they needed to run the county well. Um, and I know that there are already, there's already a long list that exceeds the use of the four point eight million dollars with options between roofs and upgrades to software that get us into the, out of the dark ages and things like that. So it's just, to me, it's a matter of trade-off. To me, there is no question about whether we should fund or not fund. Um, that, at least in my mind, is a given, uh, because of the positive impact it has as overall. It's really just a matter of getting down to whether it should be just given kind of in the mind of paying back for what has been brought into the general fund, or if it's, we just can't afford to do that because we need that money so badly in other ways, and, and this is a cost of running the program that needs to be repaid back. That's, that's where I'm kind of stuck. And just to have the other motion on the table, I, I'll move that we use all the same wording that Susie did, uh, for option one.
Yeah, option one, and I would second that. I think, I think that the piece that, I, I fully agree that we can see the benefit, and I would just reiterate the gratitude for being able to look at hard numbers on spreadsheets and really be able to speak in a factual environment. But when we have to make decisions about all of these other departments, and it's not very many months away, that they're going to come, and they're, I mean, if it, we went from four million deficit as a starting point two years ago to six million last year, and we've seen what increased costs have done over just this last year, and we see what's happening with, um, what it does to, and I might speak kind of wonky, and Susie could speak more clearly, what that does when we raise the minimum wage, what that does to salaries and the compaction, and, um, when you have to sit and pore over all of that and the ramifications for what are we going to tell staff if we have to furlough them in order to figure out how we're going to go forward, and to the point I was starting to make before, how are we ever going to have a, a county that moves forward with any kind of development? I mean, even folks in the cannabis world are going to need the planning department at some point to do something, I think, outside of the realm of what is offered within the cannabis division, when you need a lot line adjustment, don't you need to go through the planning department to do that? Is that not true? It is true, okay. Um, we have to have a, a staffed functioning planning department, and the fact that we defunded three positions in order to just balance a budget, and I will say in all honesty, I don't know where I missed that, and I feel terrible that I did, I heard the fact that we hadn't filled them up to a certain point in time meant that we had expenditures that weren't realized, and therefore there was this extra that we would have spent that we didn't spend on salaries, that's what I heard. I didn't hear, we're planning to stay in that path all the way through this fiscal year, I, I just didn't hear that piece. Um, that's really disheartening to me, and, um, figuring out how to fund those and make our planning department whole is huge to me. Looking at staff who are, um, already just so frustrated at the things that they need to do their job in a more streamlined fashion, and feel good about coming to work, that they can actually get where they need to go and get some traction, and there just isn't money to give them what they need in that. It's, it's, it's just painful, this, and four point eight million might look like a lot. It goes so fast.
Um, one of the things I kind of want to address, because we did hear some public comment about, well, we're, if this wasn't the cannabis department, we would give the money, and I'm nothing against Drew, this was not Drew's fault, but the problem is that when we did budget development, the cannabis budget came in and said, oh, we're going to have two point four million dollars in, in revenue. And all those other departments came in and said, we're going to have this much revenue, and we balanced those budgets according to what they said. They, theirs was more realistic, and, and the cannabis budget was astronomically off, and so it, those, all those other departments did have to eat a lot of money. Um, I've had the pleasure of being involved in telling people, you don't get this money, and we're not going to allocate that position, and, um, there was a lot that went into that budget development, because as fast as it is to spend four million dollars, it's really not that easy to find four million dollars, so, um, I do, I do understand, um, where this ask comes from, and I know that my biggest concern is, it would have been a lot easier to deal with this if it would have been there in the budget, because then we could have taken that money from some of those other departments, we would have known what we had to work with, and it wouldn't be, okay, we're in the fourth quarter, and now we're laying off people, it would have been, you have to figure out how to cut a hundred thousand dollars over the entirety of a fiscal year, not a hundred thousand dollars in three months. So that's, that's where I struggle with it, it would have been nice if it wouldn't have been, um, missed in the budget development, that's not Drew's fault, he wasn't involved in that, so, and I want to make that perfectly clear, that that wasn't, that wasn't the shortfall of Drew, that was previous administration, but, um, the same time, I get where people want this to be a contribution and not be included in that fee study, but part of this would kind of be, I think, included in the fee study, some of this is operating costs. Um, there, some of the contributions that cannabis has made to our general fund, that's great, and I can see where this money should come from there, um, but there, there are so many different levels of separation between dollars here and dollars here, that, um, it's not, it's not as simple and straightforward as it looks, so, um, I would actually, I'm not going to offer a third motion, I would consider it, but, um, I, I won't go there. If we can have some more discussion and, and get rid of one or other, and maybe we would move from there.
Well, am I, oh, go ahead, Susie.
Can I ask for some clarification on your motion real quick? Just want to make sure that it includes transferring the full nine hundred and seventy-one thousand rounded, but when we transfer the asset, that's at the fair market value, not the approximated number that's put there, and there's the direction to staff to go through and do that, and authorization to sign all the documents necessary to make those transfers happen at the appropriate values.
Yes.
Okay.
And by the time we get ready to vote, I'm sure you'll have that perfectly worded.
It'll be something just like that.
Okay.
And yes, thank you.
And, and I, you know, I'll just say, Dan, to, to your point, I, I think when I look at this is, yeah, the, the operating costs are what they are, they're, they're, they're spending the money, that's why they're in trouble, because the revenue wasn't there, so this is almost like becoming the revenue. And so, but if it is given as a trend, uh, an advance and paid back in this example, option one, five years, five hundred thousand rough numbers, that's a hundred thousand a year, is going to be added to the cost because you're paying it back, it's going to be added to the cost when they do their fee schedules. And a, above all the rest of their stuff, it's going to say, oh, and we're also carrying this burden of a hundred thousand this year that we have to pay back, so that gets built into my fee schedule, divided by five hundred permits and everything else, what does that equal? Right? Um, so that's, that's kind of how it ends up impacting and, and falling back on the cultivation, uh, world versus if the general fund just eats it, and then we just don't have that money to use in any other way. Did you have something to?
I just wanted to agree with you, and, and also point out, it's not something that we touched on in the numbers, but if you look at the budget projections going forward, we do show, um, a debt positive and essentially, you know, an overage, and that's not actually accounted for in cash carryover into the next fiscal year, so at least looking at the numbers that we've presented, um, it seems very achievable to include that additional hundred thousand dollars per year.
Good.
With regards to the money being carried, carried on to the, to the the fees for the folks who use this, um, we just heard Solid Waste say that that's how they balance their needs, is they increase their tipping fees, correct? It's for, it's for your trash dump, so I think that's kind of a, a traditional way to recover money is to just, we just charge more. Um, in my mind, it doesn't seem like any one person's being asked to do something more just because of, of what they're doing.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, I guess.
Yeah.
In terms of discussion.
If I gave, tried to give voice to what I've been hearing from the cultivation side is, um, whether right or wrong, we did what we were asked to by the county for this number of years.
Absolutely, yes.
Then suddenly the world around us collapsed.
Yes.
And we've been without the ability to do business for a year, which has caused some of ours, our properties, our businesses, family relationships, all kinds of other burdens.
Yes.
And now we're at a point where, not because of us, this division needs more money. We would be happy to be paying you the money if we only could have been growing and operating this last year, but we couldn't, and it wasn't our fault. So now, not only fund the company, not only fund the division, but don't make us bear the burden of a problem. of a problem that we didn't cause. That, that's, that's my voice to what I heard, whether it's well-stated or not. Um, and I get it, and I understand it. Uh, and then I jump over to the other side, and I balance that with watching people leave the county because they're overwhelmed because we're understaffed, and a list that is five times longer than we have money to fund for desperate needs for the county as a whole. And so that's where I'm trying to find the right balance. And to me, the, the option four is, is obviously the way that really speaks to the voice I was trying to convey on behalf of the cultivation world, and option one, to me, is the best, uh, option to try to be on that other side to say, well, a, at least if you're going to charge back, um, charge back half and just take the building back, and that's a lesser burden. Um, that's kind of how I get to the option one. And I'll try to be quiet because I talk too much.
So, yeah, I guess there's a lot of options here. So that option that you're throwing out there, Rick, would be to have the, that hundred thousand dollars over five years to be paid, repaid by the, um, cultivators in their fee.
Well, that's what option one would affect, in effect, too, yes.
So is it possible for me to throw out a hybrid of these, these things here? So here's my hybrid. Exchange the building for what you can. We'll say four hundred and fifty thousand dollars here. Um, out of the local agency travel consistency fund, take the remaining five hundred and twenty-one thousand, which is about six or seven percent of that four point eight. If you get twice that, it's about three or four percent of that nine point six, which still leaves the county with a substantial amount of that local agency travel consistency fund for the rest of the county, and we all know that the rest of the county could use, you know, a great portion of that. So with my hybrid motion, we're not using more than five percent of that, um, local agency travel consistency fund to make this a workable.
That sounds like option two.
It's option two that you're presenting, but the entire nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars has to come out of somewhere. Regardless of whether we transfer that building or not, they need that. So it's just deter, depend.